Okay, I call to order the Fountain County Council meeting for September ninth, twenty twenty four. There were not a chance to look over to your amendments from the August twelfth, August fourteenth, and August twentieth. Meeting, is there any additions or corrections to any of those?
Much improved. Well, hold on a minute. So we do have to vote on all three separate because August twelfth meeting, I was not here. August fourteenth meeting, we were all here. August twentieth meeting, Dale wasn't here, so. I can't vote on the first one, Dale can't vote on the last one, and we can all vote on the second one, so we'll have to do each one separately. So, August twelve. Okay, and second.
All second.
Kelly, okay, all those in favor? Okay, six out of that one. August fourteenth, is there a motion to approve those?
I'll make the motion.
Dale, maybe second. Yes, Dale, all of us in favor? Seven out of that. I'm saying, August twentieth, then it's your motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion.
Jeff. Kelly, second. All those in favor? Okay, six out.
Okay. Okay, so let's get here, everyone signs. Everybody but Dale on that one. And on the flip side, everybody but you.
Wait a minute, you didn't.
Okay, this one, Dale doesn't sign, this side, I don't sign, so.
Let him get both of them.
You're prepared up both of them.
He signed that alternative down for certain.
Okay, reported collections is submitted, is there a motion to acknowledge reported collections? Acknowledge reported collections for the ambulance department sheriff for the month of August. Second. Okay, all of us in favor? Seven out. A review and acknowledge Frasier's bank reconciliation and monthly comparison report. For August twenty twenty four, along with the monthly fund comparison reports, and motions acknowledge that.
Make the motion.
Okay, Kelly, second. Yeah, Jeff. All those in favor? Okay, so we have Zach Jordan here from Stryker Sales. Turn it over to you.
Perfect, well, my name is Zach, I appreciate you guys letting us be here today. So my manager is Chris Manakin, he's on the line right here, and he's going to present a. A program that Stryker offers. I support all in law enforcement EMS fire departments. This is a program that we've been working with with Garth and his organization, so I'm going to pass it over to Chris. And as you guys have questions, feel free to ask questions, but we'll go through the presentation and then we can address anything again. So Chris, I'll let you take it over.
You got it. Zach, can you hear me okay?
Yep, perfect, thank you.
Perfect, good morning, everybody. I'm sorry I couldn't be there with you in person. I appreciate you letting me dial in. And presented this ALS three sixty program to you virtually. As you can see here on this first slide, we call this an asset management program. And one of the things that I love most about ALS three sixty is that Stryker didn't really come up with the idea for this program. This idea came to us from one of our customers, just like you guys. Chief Carl Flores was the EMS chief in New Orleans in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. And he was having a lot of challenges getting all the Stryker equipment that he needed. And what he realized was his inability to get this medical equipment that he needed was affecting one of two things. It was either affecting his ability to provide proper patient care for the community that he served. Or it was affecting his ability to recruit and retain the best people. You're probably aware, but there's a global shortage in EMTs and paramedics. And his inability to have the equipment he needed, he felt like was affecting, once again, his ability to recruit and retain the best people. So what he challenged Stryker with was the idea of creating a program for him, and this program ultimately became ALS three sixty. But what he challenged us with was the idea of creating a program for him that would allow him to get everything that he needed today. And pay for it over the next ten years. He wanted one equal payment over the next ten years. That he could plan for and budget for, that his chief could plan for and budget for, and. And the community leaders of New Orleans, the city council and the mayor could plan for and budget for. But the caveat was he had the opportunity to sit in on some new product development sessions with our engineers. And he had gotten the opportunity to see our next generation ADD and our next generation monitor defibrillator and our next generation. Cots and loads patient handling equipment. So he wanted the ability to upgrade to that equipment at no additional cost as part of this program. So when, you know, on the upfront, if he was going to get the Life Pac fifteen monitor defibrillator, when we launched the Life Pac thirty five, he wanted to be able to upgrade to that. At no additional cost. So. The leadership team here at Stryker Emergency Care got together and tried to figure out if we could create a program like this. For Chief Flores, and if we could, would potentially help other EMS customers as well. And ironically, what we found, and again, I'm not sure if you all realize, but Stryker is a gigantic medical device manufacturer. We're one of the largest in the world, and most of our business is sold into the hospital. And what we realized is even though we hadn't done programs like this in the EMS space. We've been doing programs like this in the hospital space for years. Because over the years, what a lot of hospitals have come to realize is that the true value in capital equipment oftentimes is not in the ownership of it. A lot of hospitals have come to realize that they don't really want to own expensive capital equipment that just depreciates in value. What they've come to realize is the true value in capital equipment oftentimes is in the use of it. And so what we've done is we've created a lot of programs with our hospital customers where they pay to use the equipment and not own it. And by doing so, save a lot of money. MRIs are a really good example. Most hospitals don't want to have data cash. To purchase an MRI, so they'll pay to use it. And endoscopy is another perfect example. The technology in endoscopy changes every five years roughly. And surgeons don't want to be stuck with old technology when new technology launches. So what we've done is we've created programs where the hospitals and the surgeons will just pay to use the device. And when we launch that next generation version, we take the old one out, we replace it with a new one, and they just continue to make payments. So what we did with this ALS three sixty program is we incorporated some things we've already done in the hospital. We prepped it to do some EMS specific things, and we rolled it out to our customers in roughly twenty twenty one. And since then, we've had a ton of our EMS and municipal customers sign up for this program. Which for us has really represented a sea change in how a lot of our municipal customers acquire their Stryker equipment. Now that we have so many customers that are on this program. We, the value that they share back with us that they find in ALS three sixty can really be bucketed into these three categories. The first and foremost is pricing certainty. I think we can all agree in twenty twenty four, pricing certainty is more important now than ever. You know, with inflation, that's still not a hundred percent under control, with interest rates that are still not coming down. With global supply chains that have just been decimated post COVID, forcing everybody to raise prices exponentially. The idea that you can lock in pricing today and know exactly what you're going to be spending on this equipment for the next ten years. I think that's where most of our customers are finding value in ALS three sixty. The next bucket you see here is peace of mind, and. I think peace of mind comes a lot of ways in this program. You know, first peace of mind comes from the pricing certainty. The next comes from the idea of knowing that all this equipment is covered under a Stryker Pro Care Service contract. You know, EMS crews are typically hard on their equipment, so if we're going to come out once a year, we're going to service all the equipment. We're going to fix and replace anything that's broken, and if anything breaks throughout the year, we're going to come out and we're going to fix it at no additional cost. And this program also includes battery replacement. So if you need new batteries on a cot or new batteries on a monitor or a mechanical chest compression device. Those are all covered. So the peace of mind comes from knowing you're never going to get hit with an unexpected service related or battery related invoice. That you hadn't had a chance to budget for. And then the last piece of mind comes from knowing that when we launch this next generation of equipment. That your crews and the community that they serve there in Fountain County will be able to benefit from this new technology. You know, when we launched the Power Pro two cot, our next generation cot, we built features and functionalities into that cot. That should make patient transport safer for the EMS crews in the community they serve. Now that we've launched the Life Pac thirty five version one, there's features and functionalities in that device. That should allow crews to take better care of patients and potentially save more lives. So five years from now, when we've launched the version two of that device or version three, the idea of knowing that through this program. You can upgrade to that next generation technology at no additional cost. That provides a lot of peace of mind. And then the last thing here is lasting legacy. We've just had so many customers tell us as they look to potentially retire out. Or move on to the next role of their current agency, the idea of knowing that this capital equipment situation is being left in a much better situation oftentimes. Than they found it, they tell us that provides them a lot of value with this program. So, so this slide is going to reiterate a lot of what we've already talked about. You know, the way the program works, it's, it's a ten year program. Where we're locking in pricing for you for ten years. You're going to get all the equipment you need, you're going to make payments for the next ten years. And at the end of five years, we're going to come to you and we're going to ask if you want to do it all over again, right? So essentially, you're locking in pricing for the first five years, you're getting a whole new set of equipment. And at the end of five years, if you want to roll into another five year program. We will commit to locking in pricing on that second five years, take that five year old equipment away, and we're going to replace it with all new equipment. So essentially, we're locking in pricing for ten years, but you, as a municipality, have the opportunity at the end of five years. To yeah, let's do it again. We love this program, it's working out for us. Or you say, no, that didn't really work out for us, let's go into a different direction. At the end of that five years, when we replace it with that next generation equipment. So again, we just launched the Life Pac thirty five version one. If version two or version three is available at that time, that's what you're going to get. You get the Lucas device on the front end, if the Lucas. Four point O is available five years from now, you're going to get that next generation version. If there's not any next generation version, then you're going to get a brand new version of what you had the first five years. The last few things here, then I'll pause and see if you have any questions, is this does require credit approval. I just say that because normally all the information we need is online, but if there is interest in pursuing this program, we may have to come back and ask you guys for additional details. And then this does sometimes have property tax implications. I, I just put that out there because, you know, sometimes what we've found through this program is in some states, in some counties. With some equipment, our tax exempt customers would be responsible for paying property tax through this program, since there is no ownership on their part. But if there's interest in pursuing this program, and if we get down the road and find that that might be the case with Fountain County, then we could always. Restructure the program in a way that there's not property tax. So the next few slides are the pricey slides. Before I get to pricing, I would like to pause here and see if you have any questions about the program before we talk about pricey.
Any questions? No, I think we're ready, see.
Okay, all right, well, let's talk about the pricing slides then. So here's kind of what we priced out for you. Six of the Life Pac thirty five monitor defibrillators, five of the Lucas, that's mechanical chest compression devices. Five of the Power Pro two power cots, two of the power load systems, those are the devices that are installed in the floor of the ambulance. And allow the device to pick up the cot and a seven hundred pound patient. And then five of the new expedite expedition powered stair chairs that allow you to power a patient. Up the stairs without putting any strain on your back or shoulders. But what I'm highlighting on this left side of the slide is what we're pricing out is we're doubling that equipment over the course of ten years. So really what we're talking about today is twelve monitors and ten Lucas devices, ten cots. And ten expeditions, we're doubling everything over ten years. On the right is all the data and the pro care that we've already talked about that's part of this program. Here's the pricing. On the right in gold is the ALS three sixty pricing. Where we're basically quoting out two million dollars in capital equipment over the course of ten years, fourteen thousand dollars in the data and the connectivity. Four hundred thirteen thousand dollars in the pro care and battery coverage. We have applied a sixty six thousand dollar trade in for your current equipment. Freight we're estimating over ten years would be thirty thousand dollars for a grand total of two point four or five million. Over ten years or two hundred forty five thousand dollars a year for the next ten years. That middle column, there a lot of times customers ask us to give them some type of apples to apples comparison. How much would it cost us if we were to purchase all this equipment over the next ten years? And that three million dollars there in the middle is our best attempt to look into a crystal ball and estimate what that might be. This next slide here is my favorite slide in the whole presentation, because it really highlights what we're trying to do here. Where you see your two hundred forty five thousand dollar payment on the right, a projected ten year savings of five hundred ninety eight thousand. That's a difference between the two numbers we saw on the previous slide. But it's really that middle graph that I love so much, because it highlights the challenge that Chief Flores was in and so many of our EMS customers are in. Where they have to go to their county commissions, their board, their board of directors, and they have to ask to spike their budgets every couple of years. To get the capital equipment that they need. And that's really hard for our EMS customers, that's really hard for the community leaders that control those budgets. And just like we heard with Chief Flores, the inability to get that equipment. For the community affects your ability to take proper care of your community medically. Or again, the ability to retain the best people. So by turning those capital spikes that you see in that dark bar background. Into those gold operational spans that we see in the forefront, that that's where the true value of the ALS three sixty program comes in. And guys, that's why I think so many of our municipal customers are gravitating towards this program. Now, Stryker's not naive. We know that two point four million dollars is a ton of money, even if you take two hundred forty five thousand dollars a year, that's still a lot of money. I personally like looking at it from a cost per day perspective. And if you take that two hundred forty five thousand divided by three hundred sixty five days in a year, then you're looking at six hundred seventy one dollars a day. To provide your community and the crews that serve your community, all of this state of the art life saving and patient handling equipment. And again, I don't know Garth exactly what you guys bill out, but I would think at six hundred seventy one dollars a day. Certainly, your first private pay transport is probably going to cover that. And I would think you're probably your first one or two Medicare Medicaid calls, we're going to come pretty close to covering that. So, so that's the ALS three sixty program. We do have a secondary program that I want to mention as well called EMS plus. But before we talk about EMS plus, do you have any questions about ALS three sixty, the ten year program?
Questions? Don't believe so.
Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, I, I, okay, go on to the next slide, talk about EMS plus?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, perfect. Sorry, the sound went out a little bit on my end. All right, so ALS three sixty, we've talked about it, we launched that twenty twenty one, and we had a tremendous amount of success with the program. But we have had some of our municipal customers push back on the program, and usually they're pushing back for two reasons. Either A, they want to own the equipment at the end, they don't like the idea of leasing and not owning the equipment. Or B, you know, and Garth will tell you, Stryker's equipment is known to be durable, right? That's one of the reasons so many EMS customers use Stryker equipment is because of its durability. And so a lot of our customers are used to making their Stryker equipment last seven years or eight years, nine years, sometimes even ten years. So the idea of replacing equipment every five years for them didn't really make a whole lot of sense. So what we did is we kind of took a lot of the positives from the ALS three sixty program. And we created an EMS plus program that's kind of more specific to them. So again, what EMS plus is going to do, it's going to allow you to get everything you need today and pay for it over the next seven years. So now it's a seven year program as opposed to ten years. And at the end of seven years, you're going to own the equipment, you're not going to be leasing it. So you'll own the equipment at the end, it's seven years, and it still includes a refresh. But the ten year ALS three sixty program includes a whole new device. When we talk about a refresh of that device at the end of five years, we're going to bring you all new equipment. But we just got through saying that a lot of our municipal customers don't need new equipment at the end of five years. So what we're going to do through EMS plus is we're going to visually refresh all of the equipment. Through EMS plus, you're still giving the pro care service and battery replacement. So our teams are going to be coming out and they're going to PMing this equipment every year. So it's going to be operating like it's new at years three or four. But again, Garth will tell you, crews can be pretty hard on their equipment. And it's not going to look like it's new at the end of three or four years. So EMS plus, what we're going to do with all this equipment. Is we're going to come out and we're going to do a visual refresh on it. So for example, your power cot. We're going to replace the mattress, we're going to replace their strings, we're going to replace the buttons and the labels. The wheels, the casters, all the parts of the cots that get beat up and look like there's been through some wear and tear. We're going to replace that to make the cot look virtually new for you. And we would do the same thing with the power load system and the monitor defibrillator and your Lucas device as well. So again, with EMS plus, it's a seven year program, you own it at the end, and we're going to visually refresh all the equipment at years three or four. With that program, we've essentially priced out all the same equipment, but remember, it doesn't include a whole second round of equipment. So here we're pricing out the six monitored defibrillators, the five new devices, the five two and five. On the right, you see it does include all of the data and pro care for the the six years, seven years, I'm sorry, that we've already talked about. And then for that, the pricing you can see here at the bottom, seven annual payments of two hundred and thousand and eight hundred dollars. A year for the next seven years. And again, you would own it at the end, so at that point, if you wanted to use it for a couple more years, you'd be more than welcome to. Or you could trade that equipment in, you would own it, so you could use the traded value towards new equipment. You would be able to make the best decisions for your county and your community at that time. So that's the EMS plus version. Remember, ten years, the ALS three sixty is ten years. You get a whole new device at the end of five years, you don't own it at the end. EMS plus is seven years, you own it at the end, you do not get a second new device, but we're going to visually refresh the equipment for you at the end of year three or four. So, any questions about either one of those programs?
Two questions, okay?
I had two questions. The first is. This is a hypothetical situation. So let's say my cell phone is seven years old and I want to download a new app. Though my old phone is so old, it won't accept my new app. So in terms of your ten year ALS six fifty. Does everything operate independently or what occurs in my cell phone example?
So with ALS three sixty, at the end of five years, you're getting a whole new device. Again, we would come to Garth, we would come to the county and say, hey, this is what you guys have been paying for this equipment over the last five years, did it work out for you? If it did, then we're going to roll into a whole new five year program with all the same equipment at the same payment. Now, if we have a next generation version of those devices, then you would get a new version. Whatever the latest and greatest is at the end of five years is what you would get with that, with that program. Now, the other, to, to, I think to address your question a little better though. Is Stryker realizes when we're creating this equipment, it has to have interoperability to it, right? So the power cot XT was our cot that we launched in two thousand five. When we launched the Power Pro two in twenty twenty two, we knew that it had to work with the same power load system, the same. Fasteners that the rest of the industry works with, right? Same thing with the new Life Pac thirty five that just launched. And now it is a next generation monitor, it's going to be our platform for quite some time. But we understood that it needed to be interoperable with all of the patient care reporting systems that are out there. All the systems that allow you to transmit your patient information into the hospital. So, so we make sure when we're developing this next generation of equipment, that it will be interoperable with the systems that works with. So that you oftentimes don't have to buy a whole new device when we launch a, a, a new device. Or you buy a new device, you don't have to buy the system that that device works with.
Then my second question was, are there any circumstances during the term of the contract? As a result of no issues related to Fountain County, that Stryker would increase the cost of a contract?
No, that, that's for, for both of these, your pricing is locked in. With, again, with ALS three sixty, it's, we, we used to make it a ten year program where a customer was signing a contract for ten years. But what we found was a lot of municipalities just shied away from signing ten year contracts. So what we tried to do is tweak it to give our customers the best of both worlds. Where Stryker's committed to lock in pricing for those ten years, but at the end of five years, we're going to come to you and see if it's worked out for you, if you want to do it again. And if so, we'll roll into a whole new program, same equipment, same pricing. But if you want to do something different at the end of five years, you have the ability to do it. And then the same thing with EMS plus, that's a seven year program that, that is, that pricing is locked in for seven years.
Thank you. Any else?
I will send you guys, I'll send Garth this presentation, so you guys have all this information to go look at us a little bit more detail that's in there. So if you guys have any questions, we'll give you this full presentation.
Any else?
All right, all job. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Bye bye.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah. Talked about for eleven news presentation, thirty minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have some additional appropriations. We'll open the hearing at nine twenty six AM. Is there any public comment on the additional appropriation that's on the news schedule? Yes, Carol.
So, social security for five hundred or fifty thousand dollars, was that not in the budget to begin with? It was not, and a lot of that is due to the increase for the sheriff and the ambulance department.
It's been being worked on. I know. Three of the council members has met with the EMS department, they are trying to get that resolved.
And the covered bridge repair of fifty thousand, is that? The three, uh, off the bridges?
Yes, because we have that point oh oh five property tax, but we did not. We didn't know what last year's total was that came in when we did our budgets. So they can only spend what is collected. And we had some, we collected a little more last year than what we thought that we're giving those figures. So this is to bring it up to, I think, does it even include, will that include what we received in May? Or is that just?
That's just what we.
Received through last November, okay.
And which one? And one was in the middle, but. We said all three, that was, something was a highway, let me see here.
Jason here.
Yeah.
Said he was going to be on his phone, he's not going to notice.
Okay, you might ask me.
Yeah, ask.
Did you find out about the chip conceal?
It's next year.
Oh, it's until next year.
Because the utility company. Was, that's why I was checking. We will be there next year, we were supposed to do it this year, but the utility company was working on that area when we were ready to do it. It is on the list for next year. I'm wondering here, I've got this.
Yeah, was that the grader?
That's one, is it the new one?
I think it's the lease on the grader because we're short on the appropriation for this year in the budget.
Yes, it's on seven John Deere graders, because next year, we asked for fifty more, seven sixty four more, then he gives us that we have much of it. This past year, and it says seven John Deere graders.
So we need to redo something about all these leases, that we work for that goal.
Well, my thought on that, Carol, is maybe you start looking at used equipment instead of brand new equipment. At least for this year, but everybody's tightening their belts and I think we need to be doing the same, that's just my thought. There's some good used equipment out there, far less than what a brand new one will cost. I've looked into that, all they have to do is get on tractor house or machinery binder. I I did that and I I found some that were low hours for a lot less money. And it's not a lease, it would be a purchase, but. We're gonna have to do something about the leases, I just think it's getting out of control.
And the whole nation needs any more. We do do some leasing and several things for that. As far as leases getting under control, several of them are starting to pay off in the next two years.
Yes.
So I think that idea, right? You know, twenty twenty six, I think is the brother's one out there, in two years, I think we'll be. Through with these that we currently have.
Yeah. Sorry, Colleen, um, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Um, the leases will fall off here in twenty twenty six, like you said. That's why I asked to purchase a greater outright instead of putting another lease on the county, so. That was the intention of that, the the uh. The lease rental for this, I don't know what happened, we shorted ourselves fifty four thousand dollars to make the the final payment on that, so that's what that's for. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, Colleen.
Most of, when the, when the lease stops, it it's ours, it's a, like a lease to own. So, you know, a lot of times in the contract, it'll say for a dollar, okay, so. And I think most of them, I can't say a hundred percent of them, but most of them are that way.
That answer your question? Anything else?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing done, then I will close the uh public comment at nine thirty two. Okay, so we have uh Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirteen. Uh, non-reverting E nine one one dispatch on the, the non-reverting, is that what more county, more county pays us with that? So we're taking um uh eighteen thousand two hundred and forty nine dollars ninety seven cents from computer maintenance and seven thousand for part time out of that uh non-reverting uh. More county money, is there a motion to approve that?
I do.
Okay, Tom, is there a second? Denise, okay, all those in favor? Uh, Resolution twenty twenty four dash fourteen, county general commissioners, uh additional in social security of fifty thousand and health insurance of two hundred thousand. Is there a motion to approve the additional two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of county general?
Yeah.
Jeff, is there a second?
I'll do that.
All those in favor? Seven oh, uh ambulance, we have um overtime. Oh, actually, that was under the same twenty twenty four dash fourteen, so ambulance overtime, two hundred thousand, gas allow fifteen. And medical, twenty thousand, but you have on there for a motion, so. It's on that same one, so uh Jeff, so Dale, is it okay?
To combine those.
To combine those, okay, so. Then we have Resolution twenty twenty four dash fifteen, tune bridge uh for covered bridge declares fifty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve that? Uh, all those in favor of that?
I got a question, Dale, I wanna go back to the ambulance, that three hundred thousand dollars, is that, does that, does that bring us up to the end of the year?
Should, yes.
Should, and what would be the total amount and add that two hundred thousand dollars, would that bring us to what, five hundred?
Six seventy.
Six seventy?
Uh, Resolution twenty twenty four dash sixteen, um, that's MVH. The lease rental number three, fifty four thousand four hundred and sixty four dollars, there are motion for that. And Jeff?
I have a question, are you talking about Cune Bridge, no?
Yeah, MVH, okay, Denise, second. Sir, do you have a question on that?
No.
Okay, okay, all those in favor of that? We have transfers from Cune Bridge, five thousand lumber, five thousand steel. Five thousand in concrete to signs, uh fifteen thousand.
That's what I have a question about.
Okay.
So at the commissioners meeting, there was something brought up by Jason about some sign program. Aaron, do you remember anything about that? If we paid in a certain amount of money, we got something on that.
There's some new signs.
Yeah, and it's like twenty five thousand dollars or something.
Kelly? Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's, it's called a safety improvement plan, Highway Safety Improvement Plan, H SIP. It's a federal grant, that it's a ninety percent, federal, ten percent. County match. That was for signage, that was for striping if we wanted to. We, we, the twenty five thousand dollars is a, is our portion of the match that I felt comfortable that we could take on at this time. For that.
So what would be, so twenty, is it twenty five thousand hour, ten percent then?
Yes. And this is for regulatory signs, this, this isn't for the ID markers, this is for any other signs, warning signs, regulatory signs. Things of that nature.
Thank you, Jason.
So you already have ten thousand and this fifteen thousand will get you to twenty five, which is our match.
Well, that won't be until twenty six. What, the, this transfer right here is for our sign budget, so we can purchase more signs that we're, we're losing.
That were destroyed.
Yes.
He has the funds, he just lost them.
Yeah, this transfer, well, we, it's all under one, so we've got also lo- local roads and street. Uh contractual services to um, is that community crossing and trade, okay? So um thirty one thousand five hundred and forty four dollars twenty cents. And from Bytumbus to the uh community crossing grant of forty four thousand five hundred and thirty eight dollars. So it's transferring all these, these are funds you already have.
Now, close out that one.
And that'll close out the grant that, what do we have to manage, five hundred thousand, okay? Okay.
Jason, you know, out on the blacktop south of town here, you just got that finished. You know, the, the houses that live off of that road and you blacked up, blacktop up to their drive. If there was blacktop going down to that drive, did the county do that or just to complete the process? Or do, does the individual owner have to meet you? Because I was asked, can we, can, can you blacktop that for us if we pay for it? And they said they could, I just, I was asked this question, heard this question. So you understand what I'm saying, even though the blacktop was completed, you did your part. But the road coming from those houses out on Strank Town Road, if they wanted to meet you. You know, what, uh eventually or before that, were those roads, was that alley or drive completed back years ago when they did it? And all they wanted to do was say, hey, if, if I'll pay for it, if you just do it for me, and I think at the time. Whoever was doing the blacktop, it said they couldn't do that. I mean, I understand why they couldn't. But can you answer my question on that, can you kind of bring me up the screen?
I, I really can't answer you, Tom, as far as that goes. The only thing that was in the project was for like uh approaches that intersect our county roads. And then if, if they had a, if they had a asphalt driveway to begin with, I think they put. Um, an approach on their asphalt drives and then the rest of the driveways on that was. Uh, fifty threes that they, they put in when they were putting their shoulder in.
Well, the reason why there was a drop off from the, from your, what you did to their driveway, it's a pretty good drop off. That's.
Yes. I, I've, I've asked Milestone, I haven't gotten a response back from Milestone yet.
Okay. Yeah, well, that, and then there's a couple of other questions along the way. So that, that was my concern, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, so we have a motion on these transfers, that Kelly and Denise, that we, motion Denise, second. All those in favor? And okay, we have an invoice from BT Reynolds, uh commissioners approve two quotes, uh one for a three head. Many split system for the jury room, small claims in the IT room of sixteen thousand nine hundred and ninety seven dollars. And the fabricate and the solid chimney extension. A line of ten and chimney fleet for thirteen thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. And uh commissioners. Okay, anybody wanna look at the invoice, please?
Is this the only what we got, or is this for work that's already done?
I think that's the only quote we received.
And uh, so commissioners have approved that, they need the money and then uh, so we have um. In our council budget, we have money in building repairs, so um. If you wanna go ahead and have this done, we can uh think about our uh building repairs council budget.
That would complete that project.
That will complete that project, yes.
Plus, we're working on the other system, they had invited me, I thought I could do the construction this morning. So if that completes that project, if we got it done, we've been doing this for a while, I'd like to beg the most, let's pay it.
Your second? Everyone felt that um, but Jim, yeah, okay, I saw his end up first, so.
We all need buttons.
I might be first, okay, so all those in favor? Okay, seven oh. And then there's uh TK elevator repair work order, evidently.
It says to provide labor and control to place door interlock, door lock on four stops.
What are the basis here?
Work for the price is nineteen thousand seven seventy two fifty three and they request fifty percent of the pay beforehand and the balance of the same amount, nine eight eight six twenty seven. So.
Okay, commissioners haven't approved this one.
They have not approved that, yeah.
And she just want, she wants approval for us to take it out of our budget if the commissioners agree to work on that.
I have a question about the doors to the elevator, are they ever gonna get rid of this door that opens up to get to the door?
I have no idea. Is red, is red back there?
Yeah.
Red?
Yeah.
Red in there?
Red, you know if they're ever gonna get rid of that door that opens?
I think, well, they put them in at the time of the commissioner, didn't want to mess with the phone, they shut up. They said they'd have to knock out a bucket of stone. Where it was set out. And I don't think anyone is playing the game, but it's only very good. But it's not so, but we're gonna then connect her together, much to avail. But you know who will stay, all will be, it's electrical, it's moments.
Thank you.
And the producers have not approved that, I'm just trying to get it out, like that's in order.
Well, I made the motion to pay it out of the council budget.
All building right there. Have it been doling, so that amount of building repairs, so, okay, so Kelly makes the motions, is there a second? Yes, you, that deal. Okay, all those in favors? Okay, let's start the hearings, but um same department heads want to report before we start the budgets, hearings. Any public comment for the regents?
What I'm trying to do is, it already said, it should've been known five years ago. And you know, this time, you get everything like a splitter and a small panel, just been in America four or five years. The IT room, we had a lot of trouble there. So I talked to them about splitter, they took care of all three grounds, you got the heat and the room for eastern, they ordered it. They didn't find a bed on the chimney, we ran the cameras through, the bridge has collapsed. And we, we couldn't find a liner, but we checked the bridge out, the liner was ten thousand. So we just built a cap and a pipe extension for that. And uh, the borders, they run good, they leak a little bit when they borrow up, but after they warm up, they seal up. I would probably never mess with, with a big system here. Maybe upgrade one of these days, some newer border system. But I just can't, I just started on the back, the white mats are spread, there's a little bit of a ton there.
Is there in the IT room, is leakage?
There was, it was an air hammer that Reynolds did catch, it's a pain to catch. I guess the idea with the IT group is uh, if that wants, the judge wants to, they need smaller, they're rising a little bit, so they're ready, and that's it.
Right, yeah, she, she sent me an email about it, and there was.
No bigger doubt, try and look at it.
But there, the leak is.
It should be good.
Thank you very much.
Is Brad here?
I don't think I've got a name, um, obviously, we had that meeting last week with the, you know, our three members. Commissioner, we've been talking, trying to figure out just. Where are you guys? I want to have ten minutes, you go into vote, here, and it's gonna probably take time to talk about what we went through. Are we in a rush to get this resolved, or are we, do you want us to continue work on it and?
I actually, I've been getting it's like nine forty five. Yeah, so I'm, I'm trying to. I would like to get some, something resolved on that. On September seventeenth.
Okay.
Our night meeting, cuz that's when we're gonna go through all these pages and, and make some final decisions. To vote on at the October meeting, so.
Some things were suggested from Aaron Cruz, uh, we're going to reach out to Addy on these things and see what we can or cannot do. That'll kind of give us an idea, we'll have some preliminary numbers put together. I'll try to have that out, I'll try to get that to you guys before then, so you can a little digest that, but, so no, back to month September seventeenth then and.
Yeah, so I mean, we won't make. Final decisions till the October.
Right.
But we're gonna.
Okay.
Preliminary decisions.
I'll try to look it together and give it to you this week, then I'll be here on the seventeenth.
Is there a fee when you reach out to Addy?
There is.
We can pay that out.
Right, yeah.
You just talked to her on the phone or is it like a zoom meeting?
It'll be, uh, it'll probably be, but the information that what, um, Aaron has brought up, I will. Put it in a letter, send it to a big email, my plan is include all of you in that email, so that you can see how she answers those questions. Uh, and then wherever we figure out what she tells us, what we can do, what we can't do, whatever. That kind of dictate where we move forward from here, you know, with how we pay or whatever that is. So.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll put also here for you.
Um, I have a question. There's concern about why there are no videos or minutes to our meetings on YouTube.
There are.
I I I've seen the comments of the August meeting that I wasn't at, that there was no.
There's no video.
No video.
On YouTube. And they basically trying to hide something. That was. You can't. Obviously. So I just wanted to address that, that we are not trying to hide anything and we have no idea why they're not on here, yeah.
If you could check.
What do you?
I don't want my control, but it's on YouTube.
If you could.
I just wanted to. We're not hiding anything, it's usually it's on there, I I don't retract it. We don't control when when it gets put on.
We have a YouTube channel.
We do.
We do.
County government. And I believe next July, they have to be live when we do that.
Um. She said Brad's working.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for budget hearings. First up is commissioners. Aaron, you wanna come up here? And I don't know what I did, why. There's there's four pages, I believe. But I scanned them in, except to all the four candidates. And I'm gonna have to let somebody spend, I I evidently left them on my desk, when I scanned them in, or extend to everybody.
Aaron, you had on the commission of budget, what you replied, you have to do it again, I was.
Why don't we stop with the battle?
Okay.
So yeah, start page fifteen, you feel third news better next week, right?
You mean to make this, uh, almost.
Yeah. Want to give, follow your needs a second, yeah.
I'm gonna say one, I think I was gonna, it was when he couldn't get home.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready, or we're on page fifteen. Uh, I will, no, I stamped, uh, the copies of the budgets, Aaron has it. Send it to K W, Kathy and Lexi to. To tell them that they want to make any comments to us on that budget, then we could do that. Um, normally it's the department head who presents the budget that told us not gonna happen this year, so. Uh, well, I, I'll start with Aaron since he's the current commissioner. If you wanna. Give us your thoughts on page fifteen. What?
I could look through it. I think so. Proceed, I guess, okay?
Uh, security, longevity, retirement, brutal. And employment helps solid waste, it's on here. You'll you'll do that separately, okay?
On this childcare rating grant, is this the last year or the first year?
I think we. Childcare, I think this is the last.
Last year, right?
It's twenty twenty, I thought it'd be the third year.
Yes.
But we, we didn't pay it, we bring the paper to twenty this word.
Consulting, is that, I can sell them.
Are you still liability?
Consulting.
Consulting, right. That's my question.
Mental health is what we have to, the state requires you to pay for the tax law, like. Hey, Lexi, you have any comments?
Um, calling the county park, went to like Shawnee Learning Center and cars, I wondered what. I know it's dated, but what mental health went to, when what's.
Mental health goes to Valley Oaks. Which is there, the state's divided into ten mental health areas. The state sets and it's a special rate on their taxes, they tell us how much we have to pay to Valley Oaks. Uh, Valley Oaks has an office in in Attica, which serves in both Fountain and Warren County, I think there's. Nine counties. In in our district, um, Valley Oaks, the man, since the law of the app, and, um. They have a center in every county except Fountain Warren has one. And I believe this money goes to people who use the services there who cannot afford to pay. But the state requires the counties to pay them. Uh, to take care of those expenses, they also are in all the school, they have a staff member in all the schools. Uh, to work with the students. And we get an annual report from Valley Oaks of. How many people they've serviced and. All all the different age group breakdowns and everything, we get an annual report on that. Well, tell us where our hundred and forty two thousand dollars has gone to, so.
The consulting, is that Robert? That is just whatever.
Whatever, yes, and I don't think.
Just because we kept having to add appropriate more this year.
Right. We, yeah, we didn't appropriate any from twenty twenty four, right, so.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know if I put that in or print it for that. And the title had been cut, and I put it back to the original amount that was given this year. One of the. Okay, you need wrong budget.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, so what's our next page?
Seventeen.
Okay, seventeen, the annex. Now, the internet.
My question, yeah, I was questioning why they're paying for internet.
Internet, that's right, I think we can cut that out, everybody agree to that, our C E O.
We're sharing.
Simple speech about the annex too. Brian Sowers, John Holden's, we can get this. Just an idea. Have you there, thanks? One more copy of the case today. They immediately dismissed it.
So that's the thing, and that'll be done until January, from there. Okay, next.
Brad says there's a contract. On the internet fee. That. May, if we cancel the contract, there might be a fee for that. We cancel the contract.
On the internet?
On the internet.
Probably a cancellation fee.
See how much cancellation.
Okay, next page, uh, page thirty four is, uh, see them. You know, it's the, this is. Postage, county attorney, website, computer maintenance, is the computer maintenance, is that Brad's contract?
You know, when I was going with the budget with Lexi, that may have been put in there twice.
Where's his?
He has comes out, it has come out of King Capital Development, the board. We're going next week, oops. Where you go back, I think it's in the scene of the budget.
No, I didn't see any. I've been thinking, that's, that's why I thought that had to be.
We can remove this contract, you know, and.
There's a computer maintenance in county general county auditor.
Yeah, that's, that's my, uh, okay. Yeah. So, yeah, it's there, so that that may be something you want to look at, and I'll look at it.
Okay.
To make sure that we're not. Let me see what we got this year, we have something.
I would love to know exactly what we paid him. For a year.
Right.
Oh, yeah, over above this contract. Did we ever go above?
What's, did you say it's total content is about double that?
Uh, well, there's seventy thousand, but if you have the money, so I. Well, I don't know what is.
I, just off the top of my head, I think. Everything's been within his contract, except maybe for what he did for E nine on one, and that was a whole different. Balling there.
Yeah, I would like to pay the county attorney about this contract, I I don't read it today, but. People kind of told. Conversation you receive.
And we have thirty also.
Yes.
Lexi, you have any comments on page thirty four?
Um, I have a question, does this? Does page thirty four reflect us doing one night meeting, like switching back and forth?
Um, the.
I mean, that shows the rounds.
We have, but. Where do we budget for the auditor for night meetings, is that?
That's on council.
That's out of council, we we pay the, the auditor staff for, um. Working the night meetings, because we've had several night meetings, but, uh, I think we did adjust. It's in our council budget, we've adjusted it a little higher because of. The fact that there will be more night meetings next year. But that didn't come out of commissioners budget.
Okay. And then, um, donations has eleven thousand five hundred, what has that been used for in the?
I I think commissioners have donated to the four H fairgrounds, to the cap. To the vehicle for.
Moving.
Backing in.
And then I wonder if it's possible to allocate. Like, away from that to a specific thing that I know that's coming up, or how that conversation happened, but. Carol Graves has put a group together that celebrated Fountain County's two hundred birthday at the fairgrounds on day second in twenty twenty six. And then the USA two hundred fiftieth on July fourth, twenty twenty six, and I didn't know we could either. Either this budget allocate, like the starting funds to help. Move that project along, I've got donations.
Well, actually, I mean, we, we. The council gives the money, it's up to the commissioners how to spend it.
Okay, so that would be a commissioner.
That's the commissioners, I mean, they will, there's, um. Uh, what'd you say, under donations?
Eleven five.
Yeah, eleven five, and we appropriate that money, and the commissioners can donate that. However, the three of them decide, takes two votes to pass anything, so, um. But that's. I'm just telling you what I know, the commissioners have spent in the past, is they've given a donation to four H fairgrounds, they've donated to the back man, I don't know what else.
And also, when we give a donation, there's a new. State war accounts stipulation out there, there must be a contract between the agency that we're giving to the county.
Question on the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the economic development contract, that's we got, is next year, the third year of it. But if we wanted to get out, we'd have to let them know, now, December thirty first, right? You want to grab it, so I think that discussion is that happening.
Also, we don't find it.
Yeah.
Contracts.
Right, but.
But it's here.
We're kind of. Right now, too, to kind of.
So like with, like that contract and then. This win contract that I think that this is the last year too, so how do those conversations work, like? If the commissioners are the ones deciding what contracts they're entering into, but you're funding in, so who, does it start here or what's like allocated?
It's allocated. If we, this is just a proposed budget for next year, if we would vote to approve that. The commissioners say, no, we don't want to do it. Then the money just sits there, you don't have to spend, and the money, well, that's, officials don't have to spend them.
But on the first side, if you say you want to do something, but we don't have money for it, then it can't happen.
Right.
So if you enter into a contract, correct, but we don't think of the contract as void.
You have to come to us, and commissioners have. This is the way it's supposed to work, commissioners, go to the council and ask for money before signing your contract, if they don't already have money in their budget.
And so like, with this win contract where. It's, you're, it's already in play, the monies are. Like, are, is it often that conversations are being had, they end up wanting to get out of those after they're already. Allocated the funds to. And then the contract's already signed? Or is this like?
I'm just thinking. I think when it becomes in a negotiation time, or with. Whatever other one's on here. You need to have a conversation, or the commissioners need to have a conversation with them, that we're under negotiation, and this negotiation has to go back to the council for approval for funds first.
And like, when would.
I think that's have to be.
Would they, maybe, or just the commissioners? And saying, we'd like to renew the contract moving forward, and then the commissioners come here saying, we spoke with this group, we think that it's beneficial.
What I often see happening is the expert in the room, which would be the organization who's trying to receive the money. Should be in as many meetings as they can be in to answer all the questions. So if they just come to one meeting or the other, sometimes things get lost in the communication back and forth. Uh, so it's really not even four, it's both.
It's the time of, type of, or they have the commissioners present, commissioners might agree to it. And then the next thing we're supposed to agree to find, but we don't really know anything about it, that was, I mean, I always watch the meetings, so like, you know, what I think up there, but. We have questions and there's no one here to answer, ask questions, so then we vote kind of blindly. Um, what information we have, so I think instead of the one comes first, the chicken or the egg, you have to work together.
They, you know, should be both at the same time, so.
But. But the contract has been signed, it hasn't been funded. I guess the right, those two. That should be the best answer to your question. They need to. Talk about that.
And and then did your question get answered, Lexi, or maybe you didn't ask it? Let's say, for instance. At some point in time. The commissioners. On behalf of the two hundredth anniversary committee. For the, for the county and for the state, if you're looking for a donation, how do you get that? Proposed to the budget now? So you don't have to do it later? Is that, I don't know if you're asking that or not, I know definitely answered, the, this is how much money's been given in the past, or is available, or differently, available in the past.
Or is available, differently, available in the past. I don't know if you're wondering how to get that increased. Should something?
Yeah.
I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I guess that's been it too.
Right. So if, if you wanted more money than the eleven thousand five hundred, if you have to be requested. Like next year in July, you're going to get your forms of June. To fill out your request for twenty twenty six. If you want to increase it, because once this is advertised. We have shit, Colleen has to advertise it. Then we can. Cut, but we can't increase more spending than what we've already but advertised. So. Next year you can make changes in your request for twenty twenty six, but you have to be done. But. When the auditor gets yes in July, because we have to approve the budget by October for the next year. They want the planning committee to try to do, correct me if I'm wrong, Lexi, um. They're trying to come up with a legacy project. For twenty twenty six, and they don't know what that legacy project is now. So as they're planning this year. And during next year, you would probably like to know how much money you have sooner rather than later. You'd, you'd like to know before October, September of next year. I think. Anything else?
I do.
Okay.
Um, pause the call. Um. I, I don't think we're getting. That what we're supposed to be in for, uh, forty two thousand dollars.
Right? Sorry. And, you know. We're still paid under thirty three this year because I don't believe they've come to the commissioners and asked. Why? And I know Aaron has questions for them and you have questions for them. And so that's something we can.
Have they been, do I need to invite them to come? Because I haven't invited them. So if that was something I was supposed to do, I would, I didn't understand that. So.
No, no. No, I wouldn't. I assume if you're asking for money from the county, you'd show up.
Okay. That she may not be aware that we have this problem. All I've done is ask for a copy of the twenty twenty three contract because it seems to be. This is her and us. So, um.
I mean, if you want to, that's fine. I would, that'd be great. I was, yeah.
Okay.
In order to the next, next year.
Is that Tracy? Is that Tracy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Respect. Here's the thing. If. The county's putting that much money in and they're turning to the smaller towns. They're not going to pick anything up. There's none, nothing really out of country to be picked up. It's the smaller towns that have the problem. So that's why I guess.
Mm-hmm. Because you said they, said they didn't do hills parole and.
They don't do a lot of.
A lot of new towns have been told they don't, they don't do that. So what are they doing? So we'll pay them.
Okay, so Attica pays in, so they do Attica.
Covington has.
Cover. Covington has.
Was, they pay in.
But they pay in too?
Yeah, because I, I talked to Ken one day and, and there was a dead dog on the step for about two weeks. I didn't know. Next door to me, I said something, he's from, we got pause the call. So if you got, so what best, but you're right, Jeff.
So do you want Tracy to come to a council or a commissioner?
That's very true.
Rachel?
That's Mark. Okay. Yeah, and we'll. We sit down on the, the evening ahead of all these. If this is just to get ideas, young commissioners. So you guys have anything else? Okay. Okay. I am Phil. We have, uh.
Thanks, Eric.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I was already turning just back to the chair. Yeah, I can go to my book. But I did.
Page six.
I fact, I would say in the. Yes, that's. Well, I have, but it must be at the office. So I had to have him just, like, send him to the. Okay, so. Going up to the hot seat there.
Well, first lines.
Now, we are going to have, and I sent everybody a sheet of, I'm going to. Tell the safety, we are going to have a problem.
Yeah.
There's a big problem because. Our funding was cut, you know, we have to do the budget a year in advance. So, and most of your. Expenses in public safety are things that are going to have to happen. Because it's mostly salary, I believe. And so we're not going to have enough. We, we only started, I think, forty two thousand a year. And what we're going to get. For this year, we're going to be two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand, I believe. My, my notes are. Public safety. Yeah, so we started forty two thousand. Budget was eight hundred ninety seven thousand plus we did seventy five thousand additional on the, the races. And our income this year is, uh. For twenty twenty four, seven hundred and seven thousand. So. Not even going to cover. We're going to have to at some point. So we need to watch. Make sure we don't go in the red. Um. And at some point, we're going to have to advertise to do additional out of county general. We'll put in the public safety.
I'm looking. Just being. Budget wise versus money wise, how much we're running, how to operate the next week.
Okay, I, I figured somewhere around the two hundred twenty three thousand. Range. And then next year, um. We got budget request of one million, seven thousand out of public safety. And we're only going to get eight hundred and six thousand next year. So, and we're not going to have any money to start the year. So we're going to have to cut. We're going to need two hundred thousand from public safety and the county generals. Or, uh. No, that's the only thing that can't leave the two. So. When we get down to finals, we're going to have to move some of your accounts to public safety over there. Okay?
Yeah.
That's the only one we'll really, and, uh.
Yeah, also I'll throw out there that. Thank you for what man's kid would propose this year to actually save us an additional five thousand dollars for vehicle. Versus next year. Which is. It's, it's crazy how our things just, I mean, it's a whack. So if I understand.
Yeah, that'll help too. I don't, and I don't know what those. Were budgeted under, but we did get the three vehicles. We took it out of the council budget and.
The council thinks that I already budgeted next year, but I don't know. So.
Yeah, we'll be able to cut that.
Yeah.
I found that, so I was thinking I could cut that.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't know, was that under public safety or?
Like, it's CCD or.
And we'll probably have maybe. That will be here, but. In capital development, uh.
The sheriff.
You sound like you have a lot of ways to go.
Yeah, in CCD. We, for next year, propose, um. A hundred and forty thousand for equipment and vehicles.
Okay, so we might, and I think we're pretty good shape here in capital development, um. So we might be able to move some of the public safety.
Yeah.
If you have government instead of county general, so.
When you go there, we got two thousand.
What's that? And yes, and we'll, we should collect. About three hundred and eighty thousand. Next year in the gas development and with what we started in the year and. It looks, well, I, I think we're going to have about a hundred thousand. More in, in capital development than our budget request. Plus, we have the hundred and forty. So we got about.
A hundred and four, thirty six.
Oh, a hundred and four.
Thirty six of its equipment. I'm not sure what that is. And then automobiles were a hundred and four, which is what I already.
Four, okay. So we have about two hundred thousands, which is what we need to cut out.
Okay, it's a perfect sign. Yeah.
Okay.
But also, um, on a side note. Jason Schimmer contacted me last week. Just wanted to know. If you guys. Were looking to do anything. And I said, you need to talk to them. But he noticed that our AD was much higher for this coming year than it was this year. So.
Oh, we have to figure it out.
Well.
But then there, this thing's going to cut our tax rate though, so.
But anyhow. Our AD is higher, so that means there might be some more.
Okay, we'll get better.
But we're still.
With the four percent, yeah, we're at the max likely. So it doesn't matter whether they, they're just going to cut our tax rate and stuff. Okay, so we're on page six, your county general fund, county sheriff. It's like about fifty thousand more for next year.
Sheriff's.
Yeah.
The tires.
So, okay, so do we have what the total amount is that we have to pay next year for the sheriff's retirement?
Definitely.
Because we have, oh, so we won't need that full amount because we have a little bit of money in.
No, we don't.
We don't?
No, um, in the sheriff's pension.
Yeah, which is the fees that they collect.
Right. It, it has been drained, basically. Let me. One hundred ninety, sorry, let me get up. We still, did we pay all that out this year? So we're fully paid, but right now we only have two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. I requested seventy five hundred. But. I'm not sure we'll have that to pay it at the beginning of the year.
Oh, and then we pay it at the beginning of the year for a term?
We'd like to. That way it's said done and not forgotten and. You know.
Yeah, well, did we budget any, uh, eleven ninety three of the sheriffs?
Yes, we've got, I, I put seventy five hundred in there, but.
But that won't be, we're going to have to cut that probably down.
But yes.
Um. We've already paid this year, we have, um.
I'll see if I have that. I thought I put it in.
So we're taking in about. Eight hundred a month. Let's do eight, no, about five hundred a month. So, um, we have. Over, that's four months, so two thousand. So it looks like, well, we're going to have about four thousand in there.
That is the total amount that we need.
Okay, so one thirty five total that we've paid out two different amounts. Okay, so we could actually cut that to probably hundred thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Two thirty two and take five thousand out of eleven ninety one, which is the sheriff's pension trust.
He said one thirty.
Sorry. Yes, one thirty, two thirty two. And then we'll take five thousand out of the eleven ninety one, which is the sheriff's pension.
That was eleven ninety three.
Um, eleven ninety three, yeah, eleven ninety, yeah, eleven ninety three. Sorry, then have.
They can still need that. Yeah, so we still get it. We just have to break it.
Okay. So that looks like, I mean. Right, ten thousand for tires, gas, oil, and lose. You don't know what. We don't know what else we're going to do, so, um. County attorney. We had two thousand in twenty twenty three and nothing this year. Why?
Well, I think it came out of different.
Did it come out of a different fund? Okay.
Came out of lit, I think.
Right, so I'm making sure we don't.
It came out of. Out of lit.
And we, we took it.
But twenty four of this budget, this budget didn't live. So I don't think they paid anything of that. And then next year we moved it to. Then sheriff general.
What was it out of before?
Lit, eleven seventy?
Age fifty three. Okay, we took that off of there, which is fine because we need, we need to make that some of the public safety. So. Okay. So that's okay. Training and education. Does it increase? So anybody have any questions on page six? Okay, move to page twenty six. General fund for the jail.
That's a big increase in it for the matron.
A matron asked we pay the same amount as the laws pay deputies, so.
I remember you saying that now.
Is it deputy or road deputy?
Oh, it's road deputy.
Road deputy.
Mayor, yeah.
Mayor does, so I'm wondering, road deputy's on there.
Okay, what about them?
Mayor.
So.
So sixty, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What's the, he's a mayor.
Yeah, the one that's here in the courthouse is not murder, it would be, um. Disarm.
Disarm, yeah. So eleven percent increase for jailers. Fifteen percent for jail commander. Is that correct?
Yes.
We have enough for utilities to dissolve twenty twenty three, paid a hundred and one thousand. Only budget eighty six this year. Why is that? And then ninety six for next year, but we paid more in that for twenty twenty three. So the, um, the jailer, that's, you're not adding any jailer. That's just for pay increases, right?
Yeah, which, right now, we're. We're finally up. To where we need to be as far as jailers. But again, I mean. They dropped by five, so.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions on page twenty? Six, twenty eight, what is that? Twenty six. Uh, page thirty one. Um. Mini administrator records is part of that salary is paid out of accident reports because we can. We can, that's the only thing we can use that money for is administering. Uh, the accident report. Program. So we do take. Two or three payrolls out of that, three payrolls out of that, because it's. I don't know what's in that. That, oh, you're in the red.
Oh, wow. Yeah, on accident, yeah, that. We're working on that.
Okay. Are we going to have enough to cover this?
No. Because what happens was we were short this time, the third day came out and we're trying to get funds back in there to.
Is, is that right? We've only collected six hundred and twenty dollars this year.
What I get from the clerk. I mean, I have no way of knowing that. It's one of the clerk's reports.
Corks, that's. Who pays? That's, I saw you guys collected that.
Accident report, it goes to the clerk and then party to support. And it comes.
When they come in, when they pay for a, a copy of.
We only get free.
Or maybe it's a sheriff's report, maybe they're. So, yeah.
Yeah, they can either come into the jail and pay eight dollars with a report forward. They can either buy a trash online. And I. I don't think I would reimburse that money or how we get reimbursed or eight dollars if they buy online. I don't know. I never.
We've never.
You've never gotten anything if they buy online. I'm finding out with that company.
Yeah.
It does not cover yours?
No. We've never seen it. This person's not heard about it. We've never seen it, this person's not heard about it.
We, we, six, like, five thousand dollars a year.
We can look at that, they don't. Twelve dollars. And eight, I suppose, gotta back to us.
If we've got. I'm pretty sure we've not gotten any, what's the name of the company?
Buy, grab, B U, like, dot com. When they blow on a plan.
None whatsoever.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to check that, I'll pass this to you, I'll see if I can figure out.
I had no idea you could even do that, so.
Because if we're, if we're, we're gonna have to. Move that back into county general, if. We're gonna find out why.
They're retroactive, back to where they started.
That, oh, line has been in place for several years now.
At the end, yeah.
A hundred and fifty, for my, our reimbursement.
Yeah.
Like I said, I just.
I, I will double check our, but I'm almost sure as I'm sitting here, we haven't been getting that, or it's by the crash.
By crash.
By crash.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we can find that out.
I'm sure they would send it to you guys, not us, but. And then it would be on your report, but.
Right.
So, okay. We'll probably talk about that.
Yeah, I have noticed that, that questions. I had achieved. Seven years of those collections, and I just bring it. Okay, then we've got, uh, page fifty-three. Uh, public safety, sheriff's budget.
About is. Said March first, that the raises were through. Filing. Was it March? For the breaks that were active over the twenty twenty-one budget. For show department, I believe, so, I think it was March first, the jail, etc. Sheriff, sheriff.
Oh, then.
Yeah.
The announced budget is not correct, I mean, those, that's not accurate, so.
Figured that, but I didn't know.
Yeah, that was March, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was around, it was. Yeah, the twenty, twenty-four adopted budget, that's adopted budget, then include any investment.
Right.
Yeah.
So this. So when you look at the percentage rate, that's, yeah, this year's plus, I don't know what your request is for next year.
And then just on the financial, just five percent?
Okay.
Then, uh, on. Stream deputy two is longevity. And then, uh, transport. Five.
So there was a cap on it back in March. And. The top four. Got a cap, but longevity, you try to make up. For all the deputies would be caught up. If this was adopted, and then. Your top three wouldn't be caught up because of the cap. But that's why we're asking for a plan, should it be?
It would be effective, so.
Trying to try to.
So everybody has any, any questions on? That page. There's six, county minister. Yeah, that, that's a re. First, my home state, right, we get, that's not a collection fee, that's just. We get that in the state, right, ask for you, should be all operations, okay. Same, next year, pension trust, okay, it might have. Look at this one, it may have to. Cut that to, well, we are, yeah, to. The one you. Yeah, so. Page sixty-six, we'll be adding that to five thousand. Having pension trust.
Cutting in five, that two, five, two thousand.
Yes. Then I think we have one more. And then, then that will be on. Yeah, page forty-one, under your miscellaneous in the back. Repair and maintenance. Um, so we're gonna take that hundred and four out of automobiles. So it's going.
Yeah, the thirty-six, they represent, so the full one forty-nine.
Yes.
Okay. Delete the whole one forty, cause the thirty-six is equipment in the school, so.
What's the, uh? Any update on the grinder?
They're supposed to be coming out, looking help for me and. A lot of stuff, well, so, is what I got last week.
All the next, they made sure that last week.
I've been, so, let me get real quick, I've been with my dad, dad's got cancer, so I didn't deal with that.
Right.
So these guys have been taking a lot of slack, you know, and ended up, so. That's what I've been.
I have a question, Andrew, have they delivered any equipment out there? That, that you're aware of?
Or?
Column, or?
Not yet, they came in, they booked it, signed it last week, and then he said he would. They're gonna try to sell it this month, September, and he would give it. Be able to, and then they're getting ready to start with that, maybe. Give it to you.
I'm gonna go to the council about the payments that I've got. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I've got some invoices. I got, I got one invoice for three hundred, two thousand, Roger said not to pay it. Until something, we saw some equipment. But they have expended, column has expended funds in the amount seventy-five thousand five hundred that he would like to be reimbursed for. So I need to know from council if that's agreeable to go ahead and pay that. Since we really haven't. Seen any progress, so. But he has spent those, and he, I have the paid invoices here, uh, in.
Who's paid that?
Column excavating, they're the contractor that's going to do it. Uh, it's for the grinder itself. To get it here. So I just need to know.
What work have they done, that they want?
Well, they have to buy the equipment, this is for some of the equipment.
You're talking about, yeah, I was gonna say, are you talking about the screen?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Has it been delivered?
No, it's been built, yeah, it's not. I don't think it's been built, cause when we met with Roger, we asked him about that, and he said it have not been built. So. Before we pay anything, let me. Call Roger. And find out exactly what we're doing before they need those.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, and we, we need on the, in nine days or eight days, so.
Okay.
We can, we can vote to. Look at those bills, once you find out whether. I, I'd rather the equipment be on site, and you be paying any. Any bill. I wanna see the equipment there.
Right, yeah.
For a flex rate. Flex rate, that's what it says. And the ship point is the job site, so it hasn't come. And another additional fifteen thousand one hundred for the same thing.
What fund are we gonna pay that grinder?
It can come out of the special, where it is for the jail, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're gonna.
And I think. Oh, we did, but I didn't.
Well, we did, I mean. Yes and no.
I don't remember that now.
Uh. Not here now, I just came in.
One point seven?
Well, it was, it did first, and then it was one point two now.
One point two, so I.
This is something should have been planned on Jones.
Yes.
Okay.
Wouldn't you, yeah. What are five, me?
I mean, what's the count?
They're starting to get upset.
Cause they're getting trash.
Yeah, which is understandable, because these guys, I mean, that's a, that's a fairly new system, right?
Yeah, it is.
So, I mean. You know, if I, I was good, I'd be, I'd wanna be upset too, that all this stuff is coming down and. Captures nowhere, which is not their vast, it's ours, so.
I feel like this is the MO. Like, everything should have been done, but it was filth.
Hindsight.
It's not. That's not good.
And we're paying the price.
Yes.
Well, you, you get that information and.
Yeah, I will call him when I'm here.
I'll look at it.
If you guys see anything delivered, would you please let me know, I mean, from here on out, cause I have no way of knowing. I have.
And, I mean, we got the money in the special list, but we don't have enough appropriated, but we can. We can do an additional out of that, so, okay.
All right.
You have anything else?
No.
Just so you know, my son's dog was, um. Auditioning to become a police dog the other night when they ran past my house twice. He was on it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
They can let me down, okay.
Thank you. So, that's, so next month, uh. So they took the T cell, they'll, they get shipped to Massachusetts, to LA. So we're taking them to Indy, we stayed there most of the day, took them out, this was. After we got the blood pressure back up, it dropped down to sixty-six.
Oh, yeah.
So then I'll take him back in. He stays there for a week in the hospital, and then. Two weeks after, I'm with him. In a hotel or apartment near the hospital. So, that's what I'll be.
Rick, um, cousins like to start with that.
Yeah. So he's already at the stem cell, three and a half, moves him. Yeah. Yeah, so that's one of them.
I've been doing the same thing with my daughter. Thanks, I understand.
Well, all right.
Thanks, John.
Okay, I think we have. Must have the judge up next.
Uh, this is a fine play, well, he is the chief of the defender, and it's early, I don't know, I read. Uh, so I thought, if you wanted to let people know, and those would be out of here, and I would.
Sure.
This, but if not, that's fine.
Okay. And that's on the. The public defender, or, for many county pays the bills and.
Yeah.
And I, I think I got an email that went from point two-four percent to point two-five percent on. That.
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Uh, the other difference was, um. On, I think it was January first, twenty twenty-four, there was a state commission mandated increase in pay. Actually, that was twenty twenty-three, but we had money in the budget there. To cover that. So it's in the budget for twenty twenty-five.
So this is page twenty-one, under. Circuit Court, it's, uh, gen, yeah, general fund, public defender. Correct judge, just forward.
Yes.
Okay, and.
Which was why I did ask Holly maybe to break that out.
I did.
Of hours, so that's why it looks a little different this year, because.
Okay. But. I have to know. My email, is the two hundred and eleven, five forty-four the correct amount for next year?
Yes, it is, and I have copies of, I need to distribute them.
And I think everyone's aware, I mean, you remember how we. We, we changed, was it two years ago, the sort of, the next third year?
The third budget.
Okay, so they, they sign all the attorneys that, anyway. Rovain County pays the bill, just like we do on that nine oh one, and we reimburse. Rovain County for that, so.
And then you get your forty percent back. Of what, what we get reimbursed from the state.
Right. So, anyone have any questions about this?
Pretty straight.
Yeah. Judge, thanks. Still, still think it's a good program, I mean.
It's, it's worked very well, I think it's, um, gives a. An image, not just an image, but act, you know, a removal from the court, um. That I'm just not picking out the attorneys for them, I mean, there's sometimes that I assign, because I might know something that they might not know, but, um. It's worked out very well, I've been very pleased, but it's nice having an attorney available who can do the highest level of cases that we have, um. She's like, brings a high level of expertise, so it's really been. Very helpful. You know, this is, this is, uh, this is assistant, she's, I don't wanna say she's more valuable than him. Valuable, our all good assistants, so we appreciate her very much too. Money, wasn't it?
What was that out of last year?
Six foot. Yeah, so last year was still in, in my budget, or in the court's budget, um.
Or was it?
I think it was one ninety-eight or sometime last year, I can't remember.
This budget this year is, um, almost fifteen thousand dollars more than last year.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know, so.
And again, that's based on going up a percent, plus the, the raises, I mean, these guys don't make enough money in the first place, but. Um, so state helped out with, uh, making that mandatory. Once it's light, and we had money to cover it, so.
All right.
Uh, you know, just as a. I don't wanna say a foreshadowing, but it's getting harder and harder for us to keep attracting, uh, attorneys to fill the public defender positions, they don't get any benefits here. It's a part-time position in Indian County, they get fewer cases and they get benefits, um. Judge Reese, they're, um, funding a position up there, and they get benefits as well. Uh, much lower case load, there's a pilot right now, I'm legislating just doing, we're doing some reimbursement on misdemeanor assignments. So I'm very hopeful that the state will start reimbursing us at the same or similar rate that we pay for the, uh, felony, that we give for the felony reimbursements, but. Um. I tell you, you want to talk about people, about other defenders, I just. Technically, the rates of. The things look bad a lot of times.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Well, budget last year.
Well, is that certain for twenty?
Thirty-three, two seventy, the total funded was one ninety-six, seven one five last year.
Judge, what do you see as the solution?
I would love to be able to get benefits for these, um, people that do this, so many of them are solo, small firm, but we're all small firms here, but anyone to. Practitioners that they don't have, um, they don't have any full insurance, I mean, I have one right now, because of family, he doesn't have that insurance. It's still issue.
And I did, I, I did a twenty twenty-five budget with benefits, with. Health insurance. And perf, and. I didn't present it because it would have doubled your budget. Our budget. Um, I mean, and that's not an exaggeration, um, you would have planned from. Two eleven, five forty-four to, you know, what, two times that. Four twenty-two, or, or twenty-three, um, so. I, I mean, if that's something that the county council in the future would consider, or could consider. I mean, I will bring it to you, but since it doubled, I decided that I was hoping that we were gonna get help from the state. And I still hold out some hope. Um, it's not gonna be anytime soon, though, it looks like, but there are discussions about. The state kicking in in terms of benefits for counties whose public defenders don't have any benefits.
To give you an idea, Montgomery County has an independent public defender's office, and they have benefits, and they have full-time public defenders, obviously, they have reports there. To our one, I would say that our. Obviously, they have reports there. To our one, I would say that our public defenders probably have a higher caseload than they do there because it's more spread out. Um, but they had to do that. That was the only way that they could keep getting help with defenders. So they opted out of the reimbursement. They don't even get the forty percent reimbursement, just so they can have their own office. They're paying for it just with local dollars. To give you another example, this is more of a personal note, my daughter, my daughter just found out, right, she asked for, by my say so, right here, but, um. I have a lot of friends that are judges, obviously, and I can get her a top ninety thousand full-time defender right now. I mean, so many counts are confiscated because it's just in the desert. We don't have enough attorneys. So we're very fortunate that the three public defenders that are assigned in our county are still willing to do it. It's certainly a service that is best.
Okay. There any questions, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you, she was in the hospital last weekend, or?
Oh, after our hearing.
Um, thank you.
I say that every day and, um, they didn't have what.
There would have been a blind here.
No, Alan, yeah, I was like, yeah, I have my. That's not on the building, so she, I mean, she'll talk and not, I'm just, she's a talker.
I am.
There should be enter. I didn't think that, so hopefully they'll know one another. I guess, I, I'm locked and loaded this morning. Sorry, guys.
Well, I, uh.
Just one of those, yeah, there's gonna be extra. I wanna give one or two of them again, you know, and I never got a side-by-side from last year to this year, three thirty, so. But she's got. Thank you. Yeah. If I send it to her, the. If it did, it's out there in school. It might have been for me when we weren't getting emails. That, I just looked again this morning, you see my head one thing. Um, I know I gave you lots and most of that's still referenced, but I come this year with a big ask. Uh, you all have always been very generous. I got one more, you have everything in these two papers. Uh, what this one is, with the staple, is really a compilation of the efforts of the courts and my staff to bring in money off the expenses. That the county ensures as part of the court, so a little bragging on our part, um. The takeaway from that is we do as much as we can to bring in money, uh, with grants. Montgomery County conducted a salary study this last year for courts, that, well, for their whole county. And to my knowledge, we haven't done that, um, and I have one court that has twenty-five years experience. I have another one that has eight, and my court bailiff has eight years experience. My court bailiff is leaving me, um, the treasurer. Nothing against the treasurer, but it's gonna be a lot easier job, and she's gonna get ten thousand dollars bailer. I would say I'm in a little bit of a panic, but I'm in a little bit of a panic. So the single page front and back. Basically breaks out the increases that I'm asking for in the budget to bring my staff up to a competitive salary. Um, where they should be according to the salary study is higher than what I'm asking. Every day I feel like I'm talking to my twenty-five-year career as court reporter off of the shop, that's why she shouldn't leave. She's been here, um, for twenty-five years and she's. At forty-four thousand. She could go to San job at an entry-level position and make a thousand less. Uh, she lost her job, she's committed to it, and I'm thankful for that every single day. While we're very generous last year and gave me a fourth position because we have so much comp time that the staff is incurring. I haven't been able to fill that position because many people take the response though, with the salary that I have been for. I remember last year, I think, uh, Tom asked me, why am I putting it in at such a low salary? And I said, my response was, I can't have this person making more or even close to what my twenty-five and eight-year experience people are making. So that position is still open. What I'm proposing to do is to take that from. A full-time position, make it a twenty-nine dollar an hour part-time position to help me secure those grants. There's more grains out there that I could be getting, and then take the savings from that fourth position. And supplement. The three court positions that I have to get them to where they should be. By no means am I degrading any of the other positions in this courthouse. Everyone wants one. There are differences, though. Historically. Well, at one point, I think the, the thought was. All deputy clerks, uh, deputy assistant should be paid the same. Fortunately, you all are not doing that in most of the courts. But I cannot continue to attract and keep people with what I ask out of this. At this level. So I'm asking that you would consider this, read through all of this, bring them up to where they really need to be, uh, given the responsibilities that they have. Uh. It's just getting tougher and tougher to keep them, and I, it's hard for me to justify why they should stay. Uh, living everything that they have to do at that rate, so, um. So those are the biggest bumps up there. I sent to Colleen, I will be printed out to them, the salary for the probation officers. That is set by the state. If you don't have that, I can get that to you. I, it's based on their years of experience. We have a big bump in our two probation officer, but she had ten years this year, so that's why you see the biggest increase there. Our second officer, uh, did the four-year mark, so that's a big bump for her. I would just remind you that we collect a lot of probation fees and that offsets that. Our third probation officer is funded mostly entirely by the branch.
What did you say about Montgomery County, uh, that they do or to County, what they do, like, and that we don't do?
Salary study.
Yeah.
Salary.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of counties have done a salary study to see where they should be. Montgomery County was kind enough to share theirs with me. They're probably, I mean, I can share it with you, um. I was most interested in the court's positions, uh, but Judge Petrie sent me theirs and, um, just as an example, they have, uh, a court reporter who has. I think she was at thirteen years experience. I don't know, but she should be getting fifty-five thousand, which if you're up so much, but. One of the things that I think works against the court is that so many people say, oh, this is a small county, you don't get paid as much as you do in a big county. I think it's exactly the opposite because you have more responsibilities. I only have, you know, three and a half. They have court administrators in the bigger counties. They have a lot more people, they don't have to do as much as. They don't get, they don't have to do comp time. Uh, there's just so many things that we have to do as a small county. I mean, you all know that. County council is different when you're in a small county because you have no anonymity. It's, you know, more akin to a full-time, part-time job than just, uh. Something that we do every so often, and that's the same with staff. But that, yeah, that was a really long answer too. They did salary studies. So what they did is, um, they surveyed other counties across Indiana. Similar, similar, they're situated across the United States. You have a fact book, don't you? Can. The high fact book.
Yeah.
Yeah, and some of it probably comes from that too, um, that tells you what other counties are paying. Uh, there's a real push to try to get court staff to where they should be. It really is a specialized.
They, they had a comment to do it.
Yes, yeah, they do.
Same.
I have friends with one of their council people, but it's now gonna be the commissioner.
Okay.
And he talked to me about, they had just gotten done with this and they were surprised.
Yeah.
At some of the results.
Yeah, before I shared it, we do, I didn't wanna add to this, but I'm happy to get it to you, uh, it would be even used to you all.
That was the same way.
And what do you call it? But, uh, I don't want to get him in trouble.
What's the hundred and twenty thousand for capital out?
Well, that was mine. I kind of do something to get, uh, we're out of offices. You all may know, Brad took an office away from me and that's on me because I shouldn't have said you could put something in there, um. I appreciate you all giving me, making AC in there. I had a little bit the other days and you gotta give me half the office back because I just got happy. I don't have any room for anybody. I, we originally, when I thought we were doing some renovations, I thought, well, we could go ahead and rehave the. The court then and break it down. So I, that's still based on the quote that I got three years ago during COVID. That they could put some offices in the back of the courthouse or the courtroom, give Patty some more room, give our public defender some room. Give me another office or two. Um, one of my probation officers is, is obviously in the blossom right now, so.
So the top. When south. You go, I take a right. I was up here not long ago. There's two or three areas there that I didn't see being utilized, that, that. So do they have, when you have people that have spatial meetings, do you go into those empty rooms and meet? We does that.
So we have the jury room, and we have to, we have to keep that, but they use that for, um. Whatever, I mean, you know, it's only used maybe five times a year for the jury, but attorneys meet in there now, but it's not suited. I have to have a jury room, so I can't use that also as an office for staff. So right now, we have. That being used just when Department of Health Services is here, when attorneys need to meet or they're negotiating. There's a small claims or law, small, important, you support small claims, but it's really forty, it's paid for with that child support reimbursement that we get. Um, for doing child support collections. I have the commissioner that comes in. Call it magistrate on here. And the four judge, so she's at thirty-five thousand. We get sixty-six percent of that back, um, from the same, she helps with child support collections. That's her office. And then the third one was probably that IT office.
Is that, is that listed here? Or is that, that we know that, that we know that's what you're getting into. You got it in here. Good, I find it.
Yeah.
So that was my next question. My next question was, where do I have listed, how much money you receiving grants?
I tried, I tried.
Is that all in here?
I, I tried to give you that all this year to show you that I, I really am. I'm not sitting here saying, give me some more money.
And you know what? I, I think that for me, I don't know about the rest of it. I wish I'd have had this yesterday, you know, a driving person might.
Well, I apologize.
No, 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 I have nothing. I don't mean that. I, I, I like to study this stuff and, and see the interior part of where it's coming from. So that's where you ask about these other rooms because we were thinking about doing the courthouse and we just lost a room. I, I'm not down when I walk through here and what was looking at the building and what it needed. I just kinda wondered, why didn't we use it, use it, that type of thing? And what did Brad need over here that you were gonna use it for? Not saying against anybody, not saying that. How are we utilizing these rooms? And are they locked down? If you got a room and it's for a particular person in a department under the judge's territory, is it locked down?
We have to, uh, and I know Patty as well has to have her servers secured behind a locked door. And so initially, it was just the court that had to have my server behind a locked door, and so that's why I let him in there. This was a few years back and everything was in the basement, and then really wasn't working out to be in the basement. So then, he moved it all up there, uh, and so we're looking at maybe a cabinet. I don't know if any of you have been in there, we have a leak in there. Um, but we're looking at a cabinet to try to get things a little leaner and tighter in there, but that's where, remember the other day? Well, no, there was a commissioner meeting the other day. They were talking about Brad, if you buy a, a little portable air conditioner in there because. He's, you know, piping it out because it gets so hot and it's, so that's, that, it would appear, you know, it's dark in some of those.
They told us the leaks fixed.
I, I'm not even, I don't know. I hope so.
Dr. Jenner, he said there was a pan that. The Reynolds. Yeah, I heard his pan wasn't right, and so supposedly that's all fixed. And we, we just approved money to do something and. That's what.
Yeah, I was sitting here when they did that the other day and I'm very grateful for that because, like, Patty's been in the back of our office, hasn't had any air back there. We haven't had air in the small claims. So the small claims or the, the forty courtroom, child support, we have, um, staff that sits in there. I mean, it also doubles as an office. Um, if they're in court, obviously the lights are out, but then when they're not in court, they go down there. So they're having to share that, and then when we have small claims court in there, they have to move back to a different desk. So that person doesn't have a permanent desk. She's always moving around. She's an apartment person.
So I, I told you it's dark.
She was down in the regular big court.
Still presentable. As far as being dark, light, not marked as what the office is, if it's an office and how they're yours. Jurisprudence. I wanna see it locked down. If there's papers there, that's what I wanna see. There's a light to the office. This is what they do.
Uh, for the hundred and twenty thousand, I would love to not have that in my budget. I just went back to, okay, I don't know where we are. We're doing any changes to the courthouse, and that's what it was gonna take. I mean, you turned it in the courtroom. It's all ripped up. We've got some things that we need to do in the courtroom. Uh, the court offices haven't had any carpet or new paint since nineteen ninety-nine, um. So I just thought, oh, I know, Paul is like, you're bringing to the court. I get that, but I just thought, hey, if we're not gonna get anywhere, I need to go ahead and ask.
Yeah, well, I think, I, we all know there's gotta be changes. We need to do some things here in the courthouse, but I think. We're all in agreement. I think in January, we're gonna see commissioners are in agreement that we're gonna have to do it in stages. We'll start doing some more of them. Things, so that might, we might do that into the commissioner's budget, uh, because the commissioners are in charge of the building, so they're the ones that are gonna have to. Have final say on what's gonna be done, so.
And, and I'm, I'm fine with that. I just like a lot of the rest of the media to get to the point where.
Yeah, we, we know there's gotta be.
I'm glad I haven't been wrong the past year, but hopefully with that. So.
The fourth division that you have failed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, last year was budgeted thirty-seven. What do you call that? Is that the admin?
Court administrator is, is the title that we came up with. Court administrator is that nineteen ten or nineteen one hundred down at the very bottom there before that first set of totals.
Okay, so you have on their budget for next year, twenty twenty-five, forty-five thousand.
Right, so that is a part-time position.
You wanna make it up.
No, I'm, I'm giving you back the full. The thirty-seven, three originally was a full-time with benefits.
So instead of, because right now the budget says forty-five thousand for twenty twenty-five, but you're saying change that to a part-time position at thirty thousand. With that twenty-nine dollars an hour, twenty hours a week, that looks out to be thirty thousand one sixty. And so the forty-five, that's, is that where our savings is? I'm trying to find where our savings is, sir.
Now, that was a difference of seven thousand one hundred eighty-one. You go from the thirty.
To convert that to, so maybe my math is wrong, uh.
I want it going up.
Right, well, I, I allocated twenty-nine hours a week because that's the max that a part-time, as I understand it, a part-time position would be. So I believe twenty-nine dollars an hour at twenty-nine hours a week times, was it twenty-eight?
No, only twenty.
Okay, well, then my math might be wrong there, but what I'm doing is proposing to have that. At a higher salary, this has been a work in progress, I'm not gonna lie. What I would like is this to be a part-time position. Everybody keeps telling me, do not get back a full-time position. You'll never get it back again. Don't hold it against me, and I don't have a calculator in front of me too, so.
Yeah.
Well, I just, I, you said twenty-nine hours, but the paper said twenty.
Twenty hours, max.
This would be no more than a twenty hour per week.
Right.
At twenty-nine dollars max, which comes out to thirty thousand one sixty.
Okay, then that's what I would be asking. You can surprise that at the part-time position.
How much?
Thirty, thirty thousand one sixty, so.
No, it's, that, it's twenty-eight hours times twenty-nine.
No, this says twenty hours.
Twenty hours times twenty-nine.
So you're gonna have twenty hours, okay.
I did the, I mean, I, I'm not gonna lie. I did this in June and then I've been working on it since June.
Twenty hours times twenty-nine times fifty-two weeks is thirty thousand one sixty. So it's requesting forty-five thousand.
So, so you thought thirty thousand.
It's even more to save. So then you said that the difference between that would be applied to.
To help offset the, the substantial increase that I'm requesting for the court stack to bring them up.
Okay.
A little more aligned with where they should be. So, so not only is it a seven thousand dollar savings from last year, but also all of the benefits.
Right.
It would almost be. Yeah.
Which is pointing down to using twenty-two dollars an hour. Tracks.
Yes, yeah. I mean, I interviewed and interviewed and nobody will even look at me twice about it. I apologize. Like I said, it's been a work. I did have salaries that also when I did this. I just got in. I'm just trying to tell you it's where on this page.
Anything else?
Oh. I would just point out probation is funded by fees. As part of their operating budget, there are a couple of things that we asked for increased financial cost of mileage, but not um, last year, obviously, but the cost of ink or water conferences have gone up. Um, but we fund that. We assess.
Right, we should grab the monitor.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much all of the information that I have. The only thing that I would say is if you knock out that hundred twenty thousand, and I understand why, leave me a little bit just to do a couple of things and, you know, in case, no matter what's gonna happen this year, it's gonna take some time to implement. And we do have a couple of rooms that have carpet that are completely threadbare.
That for a jury grant needs painted.
Well, I, I did paint three of the four walls out of the budget this year. The fourth wall that's still crumbling, I didn't, but I was just embarrassed to have a jury in there. So I got somebody to bring it in. Real quick one.
Think we need that information on that. I know you want to. Might be interesting to do. I've got my county.
We also have the thing from A I C that lists all the counties our size and I'll, I'll print that off with a that you gotta look at.
Yeah.
I gotta look at, we can print off what. I mean, you guys are size, what those salaries are, because that's what we looked at before.
I, I can't find probation. We have the employees.
Plans of what?
So, so people have passed my budget. So we have the circuit court budget and then, uh, possible, and then after that is you'll see probation administration fund.
Seventy-two.
And then the jury fees, those are all collected. And then test fee, that budget is completely what is paid from.
Um, seventy-two does not have salaries.
No, that's on the circuit court. So that's on the first page. I'm sorry. I thought you were, yeah. So if you go, um, right under, it's the fourth one, chief probation officer. Right. So that's set by the state. Yeah. Yeah. We actually have three officers. Um, one is paid with the D O C grant, but I don't, I don't have any discretion except to pay more. On those two. Yes.
Probation for the states.
It's the child support. Yeah. So she's the one that helps me and we get the, the reimbursement.
Second officer who was watched.
The probation officer. State says chief probation officer and second officer. State says what their salary has to be.
The probation salary is set.
I thought I had it, but I can't.
Okay, I'll run another copy back then.
I'm pretty sure you gave it to me, but I can't.
So.
Administrative assistance after probation. That's.
It is.
Okay.
And you'll find a little blurb in there about her that I'm asking to take her up to pretty much just a little above Sam's Club outlet. Uh, the sheriff gave me the information for the security officer. The one that.
Yes.
Moved to my budget.
I don't think. Fifty-nine is correct, that was something. And sixty.
I, I didn't. I don't know. He just gave me the number. That would be proud, so.
Seventy, where are you at on interpreters?
There's something in here about this, about interpreters. Um, I have one up there full-time today, right now. Once a month, we have, uh, an interpreter here for the whole day for Spanish cases. They are just through the roof right now. Uh, so I got a grant from the state for last year and this year, and it goes over in two thousand twenty-five, uh, and it's paid for the entire. So I very much appreciate that. They were kind of, it's kind of an emergency situation. Uh, so it's not possibly counting anything right now. If it's other than Spanish, we just gotta have them appear remotely and just save me for that as well. We have a great decent size of the A Ds and a really decent size of burries. Uh, population will struggle through Indiana for some reason, about seventy-four. Maybe they're going to. Seems to be the case. Yes, they do. And they all wanna come to Indiana for some reason. I don't know why, but, uh, not gonna guess. But I will say a lot of those, in, in all fairness to the prosecutor, a lot of those are, and he is pretty diligent about filing charges, uh, since possession of marijuana or driving without a license. And it results in a lot of emergencies and you know, you know how the. I've asked my law. Some people send people without licenses. Let's just figure out how they'd be in the license.
And you have to do it full to full run or is it just?
On the interpreter?
Yeah.
So we set our interpreter dates a year out. So last year I learned real quick. And so I secured Dawn and she is a simultaneous interpreter. She's certified by the state. And I've got her already on results for all two thousand twenty-five. I don't understand why it's too hard. I'd have been her. Um, I'm less clever. And she's from, yeah.
Perfect.
But guys are bringing home.
And we aren't getting some reimbursement back on that.
No, she's paid more entirely from the grant.
From the grant, okay.
Yes, I haven't had to pay any county money for her.
Very good.
And that's not the case. It's so. But that puts some information there. It's not a huge cost, but it is a cost. We're at Lake County, I was telling you the other day, they have, your cost hundred and seventy-four thousand last year.
You, and that's what you titled?
No, I don't think that. No, ours is only about six thousand. Well, I have a grant for six thousand for this year and it's so hard to cover it. But also the nice thing is if I run out, the state has set up new an emergency grant saying I ran out of money.
And how often were they there? The reason why I'm asking, I was there at the clerk's office and that was the day. They were lined up, double down the hallway. And the interpreter came out and I talked to that interpreter because the gal was taking care of the door going into the clerk's office. She stopped me on the dock. She was out of Indianapolis.
No, it works primarily in Indianapolis, yes. Um, that's Dawn, Rainie. She, um, she's here once a month for the most of the day because even if we just have court in the morning, I have to have her in the afternoon so the attorney's gonna meet with their clients because they don't speak Spanish. Same with child support. We have child support collection cases now where we will only speak Spanish. So it's not just criminal dependence. It's the Spanish cases, it's eviction cases, it's. So, and then for the burries and other people, we have a line that we can call. It takes a lot longer, a ten-minute hearing generally will take thirty minutes.
Who's responsible? They, they.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Who's responsible? Once they see the clerk and they're leaving the courthouse. Who sees that they leave? I mean, they don't speak on their own.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yes, I mean, security watches, no watches, I watch some. I mean, honestly, of all the people I deal with, they're all very pleasant. They're all very amiable to whatever the process is. It's just the understanding. So, uh, I mean, I know what you're thinking. They're all very pleasant. And the, the majority of them primarily hurt us. Really hasn't been a huge cost other than vendor wise.
Got it. Yeah. Bill's considered four house savings, right?
And yeah.
Well, you're talking, you're putting me in my budget a couple of years ago.
But he is, he's a married dog.
Yeah, yeah.
And that fifty-nine is not right. It's either sixty or sixty-two.
Well, if he considered W ten.
That's where I was.
Oh, beyond sheriff's.
I'm looking at that. Colin sent us, sent us for what all the papers are. And I'm guessing not to what it is because there's nothing. Five percent on that was for. Twenty-two and twenty-four. Legended, lots of personal creations, works out in fifty-nine and sixty-three. We got a lot of.
Saint Cloud's thing on the insurance ledger.
Yes. Yes. Um, I do have the overtime budgets for Bill because he. He every year, every week has extra time. He has to open the courthouse.
I have accidents by.
There's nobody.
Well, he moved, because we moved it to pass and moved to.
Oh, to the, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have.
Bill is getting paid uh, this year's budget, forty-seven, two fifty, plus we did an additional, uh, ten thousand seven eighty-eight thirty-four, which I ended up with fifty-nine thousand thirty-eight.
But you're saying Bill, you haven't been the sheriff's budget?
No.
We're just trying to figure, um, so he is paid less than the others?
Yes, certainly.
Okay.
Forty-three.
So that, that means the paper should be same as him, the laws, yes. So we need to, we'll have to justify this to them. Okay, so we're on the.
I think, yeah, we need to.
So.
I'm gonna look at that again.
Okay, yeah, we'll need all that for next Tuesday when we.
Denise and I were just saying, we need a twenty-twenty-four adopted, then twenty-twenty-four amended, and then twenty-twenty-five requested.
Yes.
More spent here to me.
Yes.
Cause we need to know. So we do, so we get.
For every. I was like, you see, you did. And that's, can't tell me if I was good at it.
So do we have any more questions for the judge?
Tom, I'm sorry. I didn't get that to you sooner. I just thought it was a lot of information and I wanted to end this being real.
I would just put it together.
You're fine.
Yeah, and really it's the next Tuesday night when it's started.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be now, then if you have any questions, feel free to, to call me in.
Okay.
Or email me.
If you can send me that.
Yeah, I'll bring it right down.
You gave it to me. I had it.
It's okay. I'll bring a copy for everybody. Uh, that's Bill thought getting a decrease in salary.
No, 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 okay. It's just.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm trying to figure out.
Go to the master bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring that right down.
Okay.
Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We can get Daniel out of here quickly. Daniel is on, um, on the prosecutor, page nine. Page nine, page twenty-seven, page six, one. Okay, so we'll start page nine. And, and his clerk is paid out of, uh, under, kind of general prosecuting and then also under, um, general, next page, general title forty. So you have to add both those together to get the clerk's total paying. But it's not much different than page nine from this year. Just mostly it's pay increase and it looks like you got office supplies, view supplies a little bit.
Just with the times.
Yeah, it's going up. Title forty. All increase there. It's like salaries. Pre trial, pre-trial diversion and then we'll be what? Comes in, spans. Seven. Anything to add?
I don't have anything to add. I do have up in. Okay, we could discuss it a little bit and put it on your radar and maybe I can be back from the camp. The numbers we're seeing overall, criminal cases coming in, the filings are going up. Our J D cases, which are two of the next cases, those have exploded for lack of better phrase. And I can give you firm numbers. I have them in front of me. The issue we're seeing is right now, over the last go back four years. We went from an average of thirty-nine cases a year to forty-six, forty-five, forty-seven. This year, wrong case was fifty-two, fifty cases a month. Sorry, not a year. So they're going up a month. I'm filing a new criminal case. Our infractions is staying about the same, right? It's gonna be right around a thousand. Juvenile length cases, going back to twenty-twenty. And these are tracked a little differently, so it was hard to define. Twenty-twenty looked like we had twenty-six. Twenty-twenty-one only two, twenty-twenty-two, seven, fourteen last year, forty-six this year. So not all those get filed, but all those cases are getting reviewed. They're getting processed through probation. They're coming back to us to either file them or probation period. Either way, it's more cases were reviewed. And in the case where I'm filing the new criminal cases, it's probably out of all the work, just in the filing room for me, review the case, prepare it, have it in court, come back downstairs, do a discover response, do a plea agreement extension. And that's how you take it into account in the negotiations from that. I think part of the issue is, it's not really an issue, but it's a concern I have. Since I started eight years ago, Attica's added two officers. Covington's brought in a couple of new officers, new, new officers, not new positions. Attica added two new full-time officers. Um, Beersburg has a one younger new officer and the state police has three or four new instead of coming recently. What happens with newer officers, especially younger ones? They, they wanna do everything. So they're sending more stuff our way. And then our county department, you know, it's essentially doubled since I started. I'm getting to a point where I need somebody that that can help me process some of these signs, that can handle more of the administrative stuff that I handle at the time because everyone else that's in there, they're busy. And we're required a bit in, I don't have a figure, but I'm just trying to find out if there's something that people did together. If not this year, next year, we do bring quite a bit of diversion money. I think that's setting up there pretty, pretty heavily on, probably can access that quickly.
Infraction?
Yeah. No, there's a fraction of furl, which I think we, we spend pretty regularly each year.
Okay.
But the diversion part, yeah, is very insignificant. Last time I, I checked it.
I think it's a hundred. I said, wrong one. Twenty-five thousand.
Hundred and one five.
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five.
Hold that as.
Hundred and five.
Free trial, eleven eighty-two.
Free trial, eleven eighty two.
There's a. A number of roles that I feel that I can handle. Uh, that it all, because they have people to handle it, now, of course, more, we don't need a full time. Referral fractions coordinator, full time investigator, or full time paralegal, anything like that, or a vic detective. Getting somebody that I could package one role into would help us out.
So are you looking at an attorney?
I'm not looking at an attorney, but I will need somebody who, uh.
Like a parent?
Pay him out of free trial diversion.
I'm trying to figure out how to, because it's taken us a while to get to that level, um. So what I'd like to try to do is develop something using a portion of that. And also see if there's something in the four D or they could help supplement a little bit, so you can get some of that reimbursed from the state.
Yes.
So that's not all, so that's someone who's coming back to us.
So initially, you have this like full time person paid out different.
Paid out a difference pools of fun.
Yeah.
Yes. I don't know how quickly we can do it, or what you would would need from me or to hear from me. On what it would look like. Well, okay, you paid one out of one section.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Briefly, a conference last year. And so we have a little.
The free trial diversion is nothing they.
Yeah.
So if you first get paid out of that. Forty and seven.
Full time positions, one person so much paid out on one, I had much paid out on the others, and about benefits.
Cause that's my concern, if I come to you with a relation of it for a full time person. I know benefits are in there, and then, when you look at X amount on paper for one employee, well, behind the scenes, there's that much more due to benefits. Yeah, that's right, and so that's why I'm concerned, because I tried out where we're pretty lean.
Where where does the hours stop, thirty hours before the benefits?
Twenty eight, twenty eight, hard time to keep that in mind.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to get any.
No, no, and I agree, but some should get some of it off of a part of play.
You gotta find somebody.
Find somebody that's well qualified to do it, but that'll give me some more time to focus on my cases. Cause we've had more, a more event, more cases to go to trial this year, they have, I went to trial, a couple of pled, right before. There's a lot of work put in getting that ready, and then the other stuff.
I wish we could charge them. Get our fees reimbursed, yeah, one trial, he, they pled right at the last, and we had jury. Call here, and you know, gotta pay, and I was out twelve fifteen hundred dollars because you have to aim for coming in. So, I mean, no fault to anybody except defendant, maybe, make up your mind.
Juvenile, forty two people this year, forty six cases reviewed, so a juvenile case comes in, and so this is, it's a great question, it's split. One will come in and it'll be reviewed, now, let's say. Twenty of them, you have to file, twenty of them will go down to a non active file, so. The way I had to review them, I just went and looked at our, what do we have active, what do we have non active? Uh, or a non active, one's closed out, but there's been, Jill said that forty six is what they, we should review this year. File, I think. Thirty four of them were filed. Up to forty six, and twelve of them were not, or twelve of them were closed out. Yeah, we've seen our our juvenile. We have a resource officer in each school, now, then we have a detective at the level of the county, and he's needing search warrants. We need that, it's, they stopped what you're doing, we gotta get this done. Uh, we've worked with him so that he has our format, so that he can build most of them, but we still have to go through every issue, forget files. I thought. Uh, no, we didn't have, we didn't have good shots. So I. Hey, we was there, I. So, okay, do I have time to put something together yet this year, or? Not, do I need to start looking towards next year to play?
It has to come in, well, there would have to be an additional, it hasn't been advertised, so it's too late now, but. It could be done next year, but it'd have to be done after the first year as an additional, if you're gonna take it out of pre trial diversion in your title four D.
Okay.
It can be done, but it can be done. Ahead of time, it's gotta be done. At the, at the first year when it could be advertised as an additional, then take it out of those two funds.
You can have it in a regular guy away.
Oh, yeah, usually the L G F doesn't, uh, issue until February, so.
Okay.
If you get things lined up.
Okay, I will work on it.
So it could be budgeted next year, I mean, it could be spent next year, just can't be budgeted ahead of time, because we're too late now on the.
I understand, but does he have a left in there that he? Be creative enough to.
Well, the hundred four thousand in free trial diversion, there's twenty seven thousand and forty incentive. So, uh, and it looks like free trial diversion, looks like it's taking in about, uh. Twenty five hundred dollars a month, maybe, and and then your expenses have been about eight hundred a month, so. It's it's bringing in more than that. Now, so our. Consent that you've spent more this year than what it's brought in, so.
Would it improve him to get something on paper and bring it to us before they get in here, so we can look at the number?
Yeah.
With benefits and without.
Yeah, and you can look at it, but you're really not gonna know what you're eating balance here, it's almost seven thirty.
Right.
First to know what you've got next year that you can. Plus. I don't know what's on your budget for.
Got eight and Allison.
Eight and Allison, yeah, up eleven eighty two, so, you know, got a hundred, got ninety six thousand dollars there today.
I didn't know what I wanna touch on.
No, but no, yeah, that's exactly right, so. That's it. But, yeah.
Okay.
Bring it in, it's numbers, whatever, it'd be February or anything, yeah.
I see.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Okay, so we got Patty's our last one, I'll just go over a couple of things that Jason sent. An email that he is wanting to proceed with U S I consultants to help with, uh. Uh, development of next year's. Community processing grant, and there he is. Looks like twenty thousand dollars to. Do that, and, uh, he did. Presented commissioners last Monday, they approved it, but brought it to ask for approval. Do the French have money, that way I'm coming down there for their name money?
They don't have it.
They don't have any money. Okay, so we can take it out of. Counsel, um.
I don't know, Jason's better than that.
Oh. Well, he's got it, he doesn't need our, that's why I assumed that he doesn't have the money, that's why he's asking us.
I just checked.
There's still on there. See what we have.
There's some, there's some of that.
Okay, so we could do that under. I I would consider that improvements other than. Than building, because we are improving our roads, so. If it's, you know, everyone's in agreement. We can take it out of that if he doesn't have the funding. Uh, our. Four, four, three, five, oh, council budget improvements other than building, we have eighty seven thousand right now, so this is like. Twenty thousand dollars fee.
And he wants money for what was?
This is to have U S I consultants. Uh, plan for the community crossing grants next year. Looks like they're going to do, um, South River Road from Covington City Limits, Silver Island Road from State Road thirty two, and. Uh, West one seventy, South and South River Roads to Strangetown Road, and Walmarts Chapel Road from South River Road to Strangetown Road. So I assume. It's probably around the same. Two million dollars, and the state will have five hundred thousand, but this is for them to do all the preparation work to make. Sure we meet what. State requires for the community project grant, so you have to have a charge of twenty thousand. So Jason, I can have the funds that you.
The, I'm looking real quickly here, but I don't.
Okay, so, um. Is there a motion to go ahead and take this out of our. Council.
We got one, eight and seven.
Okay, Kelly made the motion, I was like, um, made a second, and all of you very definitely. So. Then I. Have emailed all of you this map. But if they'd be reading the version better, yeah, but this is color, so you can see, um. Aaron gave me this, as you can see, the orange is what Ranger Power has signed agreements with. The orange with the X, I'm told, is where they're not willing to do that that property, and all this black area. Is all new area that they're signing up. And they've asked Petersburg for permits, this is the D E S R I.
Desri.
Yes. And. They're asking for new permits. And. Roger has said that they're asking for new permits, that voids the original permit, and that's why I sent an email to Colin, because. He wouldn't answer Petersburg's questions, and I said, why is? The E S R I, and I think his response was that they're their. Parent company or manager. And investor, so why didn't they get the original permit, my question? Said Ranger.
Firstly, that they questioned why they thought they were missing.
I know.
I mean, how could they not see that for our, it's been a lot of strange.
Here's seventy four and one thirty six.
So there's property on this other side of seventy four now.
That's this over here.
Yeah.
That goes towards Rensies. That goes towards Don and Rensies. Oh, I, on this, on across these.
I told all this area here is all tip whites that they're putting all their room now in it, so.
It's committed here.
Now, they, in in my opinion, um. This changes the whole scope of the project, which therefore not only voids the original permit. And they should have to reapply, which at this point, we've got a moratorium on, so they can't do that, so in my opinion. This is.
Yeah, and.
And let's say, for some reason, I thought we were voting today on whether to rescind or. Or the other, and we we mentioned that we might, but then when all this came out, I said, I want some information that I don't. Know what's going, I mean, Aaron sent me this and said, I'll look at this map, this clearly explains issues on this, this isn't.
I think, yeah, I think they do, this isn't anything new, that means I was told years ago that it's all a part of it. But. It's just nothing in the style of chat.
And I don't know if column is here, but she's already left. Yeah, but I told Taylor, we would not take a vote today because I, everybody had these maps and.
Uh, I do know. That in a landowner's contract with the company, it's always been stated that. The contract follows the project, so. So they can originally be under contract with Ranger Power Crossword Solar, but if that project gets sold, then their contract immediately. Stays with the project and goes with Desri, now, that doesn't mean that. Their permit with the county follows the project, in my opinion. I.
I would guess they haven't heard it, so.
Yes.
I wish not.
Yes.
Why I didn't wanna.
But.
Say when we voted today.
It goes with the project, but the project we permitted was different.
Different than this.
The question.
And in a landowner's contract, it says that they can. In most contracts, I can't vouch for Ranger Power Crossword Solar contract, but most generally, it'll say they have the right to add or remove. Parcels of that person's property. So who knows what.
I know.
It's allowed and tolerated and agreed upon with the county.
I don't think any of them, this is our say.
No.
I think Petersburg. I talked to a zoning person member. And the guy, Desiree. Was that a board meeting, I think about that, he was at a board meeting, said they're going to put a solar sign, you know, beside that factory bunker works, you know, there's an area right in there. I mean, that's going to be, but he said, that's why he was there, because Petersburg couldn't offer them the power, the kinds of power they needed, I don't know. I'm just repeating itself, and then when I look at this, that's why I ask, where are these areas, how much, where other areas are there in Petersburg or some other community?
Well, let me ask you this, Tom, right there where they wanna put it next to the, is it Master Garden?
Yeah.
Is that, does Petersburg have a two mile radius?
Yes, they do.
Zone on it?
And and so, that's why. Does, whatever, Desiree has contacted the court treasurer in Petersburg, that's why she. Contacted Aaron and said, what's going on, you know, they're wanting, he has to give them a permit. And. Cause I'm, I think they were told. There, even in the city limits of Petersburg, there's some properties that wanna put solar panels on, and it probably have to be a solar solar. Probably not.
So is that going to be a separate project for this? Or is that?
That's what I, that's what they're trying to get out of Colin, that's why I emailed him, because they said Ranger Power no longer has it on their website about this project. And, oh, you did tie this? Okay, so. They asked me to send in Colin and see if I can, I informed you my correspondence to Colin and what his response was, and basically, you know. There are. Our developer. Major owner or something, major, not owner, but major, um.
They're probably investors.
Yeah, I think it was, and he says, you know, the contract follows. But he didn't tell me that they really sold, did it answer that part or something?
There's a board meeting tomorrow night. I'll be there. Uh, but, um.
Let's see what you can find.
See what I can find out, but you know what, so are you, you're saying that Desiree really owns Ranger Power?
They own the project, they don't own Ranger.
It says, um, Desiree is the Rangers' investor. And the fifth largest owner operator of renewable assets in the country, Ranger is the developing arm. Developer arm, and they are typically owner operator of assets that Ranger develops. This will be the owner of Crossroad Solar Project, and are currently working with us through the final steps of development for on the project, will be the construction. So that.
Well.
Did you see the word owner?
I know.
And the owner operator, they are getting every contract that has been signed under Crossroad Solar. And have been the part, parts project from the beginning, well, I didn't hear that name.
No, I mean, the part of the project, yeah. From the beginning, and yeah. No, I mean, the part of the project, yeah, from the beginning, and yes, they never, that's, that's your name, or the remaining process. Who want to introduce investor? And if anybody's really able to process the project.
Their name should have been on the permit. Their name should have been on the permit.
So. I don't know if the meeting on the. Seventeen, you want another? Vote on the. The RA and. Act abatement, whether to uphold it or rescind it, and I'll leave it up to. What you guys want to do.
Well, I don't want to be deceived, I can tell you that. I said, I don't like to be deceived.
What do you think, David?
I'm not sure it stopped with Desri.
So.
Ownership is like, like when you get into this size, ownership is owned by this company, by this company, you know, I mean, it's.
You know, it's a large hedge fund, you know, that's out there that owns it. I have no idea.
All I know is what Roger said is, if they're changing all this, in his opinion, it voids the. And it's a commission meeting only to vote on the comprehensive final settlement.
Yes, it's uh.
And that agenda is.
The twenty sixth meeting. Yeah, so twenty sixth meeting. And that's a bit of a problem.
And our next meeting is seventeen, but it's Tuesday, not Monday.
Yes.
I think it says on here too, Monday, but it's Tuesday, the seventeen, and that's what we'll go through our back day, and if we want to deal with this, deal with it. Wait until October meeting.
So we don't know what else is coming, really, I mean, we're just now finding out about Desiree, what else is coming down?
Yeah, right, well, that makes you assess that equation number twenty six, so what this school, what school the project is.
And if, and I hate to be a mood killer, but if this. Which is the White family.
Some, some of it's L two.
Yeah, some of it's L two, some of it's White.
Windville.
Then.
All this is Walmouth College truck. West Cal State Development. Walmouth.
Yeah. I kind of like their college, I think the other, that was, what they're doing with this, hey, they're coming in the back door, guys, come on up.
This is right the. ERA, ERA, that they proposed was so much bigger than each other. I'm guessing some of this is, I wonder if it has already come out, because Taylor. Sent them a message saying, would they be willing to say, okay, that area's only parcels that are signed up? So now they put out other parcels that are included this, I mean, maybe it's coincidence, I don't know, but it all happens to have happened at the same time, because we. We wanted to change that to be just parcels and.
Now they're maybe.
It's clear why they made it speaking.
Okay, well, um, and we got, we got a couple more things, and Tom's got to leave soon as the court's done, so I'll give you order.
Okay, on uh, financial mission, I had an invoice for getting that in the amount of. Two thousand two hundred ninety eight dollars, I do not have enough to pay the whole invoice. And then also I have outstanding, I don't have a total dollar amount for Roger, but we have. Some counsel and myself met with Roger, uh, I need to know what I'm gonna, if I'm gonna pay these, I'm not gonna pay them. And if we pay them, I'm I'm gonna.
Okay, so my thought on our conversation with Roger, we need a little clarification on that spreadsheet. I'd like to know why she deemed, and why she deemed them. Over and why it came up to ten thousand dollars. I think I need, I personally need a little more clarification.
Because he, he said in that meeting, some of these, he said, I don't charge, remember, he made that comment? Well, if he didn't charge for that, we still don't have that no charge cap. I mean, they're there, and his name is still on there, but one of commissioners. So we don't know which ones are there that's supposed to be taken care of by us, so how much money is it?
I didn't, I don't have Roger's total invoices that I've received after that spreadsheet was done, I I can get those for you.
I walked away not knowing what the dollar amount was, I walked away, I didn't know what it was, I didn't know what we owed, I just, I would like to see. And then go back and check though, you know, and go back and check the invoice and see if we're all good. Otherwise.
Let's even get more information and talk about it on the seventeen.
Okay.
Um, we did get the money from Sweet Pea reimbursement and Mr. Temple from. The other seller brought the check in.
Oh, it was a personal money order from, it's cute.
Okay.
I just found that. Well, he shorted five dollars. That was the big part of money order, yeah, it was two hundred ninety five dollars and they gave you two hundred nine.
It came from Mr. Temple.
Yes.
He said from Sweet Pea Solar and Mr. Temple.
Brother and I.
Is a, yeah, he bought it, and he's a rest, yeah, he's a representative for, for Gen X Dolphin Solar.
We're not average.
We all must have suffered written on our boards.
I looked at him and I said, you're paying, and he was like, yeah. And he, and I was busy, I had, I was in the middle of a webinar, he barged into our office. And I really couldn't deal with that.
Yeah, I thought Sweet Pea was.
That was from Liberty, it's supposed to be Liberty, Liberty Solar, yeah.
From Liberty, I guess, which is Algonquin, because that is all basically one family, that's Algonquin is the parent company and they're out of Canada. Liberty Solar is Liberty, which is Algonquin, I know, they put a lot of names on there, so it keeps your head spinning.
So, so would you guys need the bracket, if you didn't come out of that meeting like, okay, we're cool?
I was, it, no.
I'm satisfied on some points.
But. Oh, with it on, I got you.
Well, let's get more information and talk about.
Another thing, there was some questions from Roger's invoices regarding uh, Bannon and banning. Uh, that is two, Bannon Engineering is separate, that was on, he said, was a broadband tower. Was an application to be reviewed, so that is. I guess county expense, it wasn't Rod Bannon.
But do they pay a permit fee? How do we get reimbursed?
Well, see, we're waiting on to get that. Chase had a permit.
So that solves everything with that comprehensive plan, and somebody gives you a check for two hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Can't say plan has nothing to do with permit fees.
But I'm just saying, that's silver, tell me, he said, hey, I've just given you some money, I got my foot in the door, what are you gonna do about it? That's what I'm saying.
No, no, because it's just, it goes back to what I said, there should be no, we should be paying no bills. For anybody that doesn't have a permit or permit and process, and that's why they reimburse us the money, because we're not footing that bill.
That's why I'd like to see Kevin, that is totally. What kind of papers we made it to, or what, for what reasons we made it to him, and, yes.
I've got a copy of every invoice in my office. From Kent, I have Kent's.
And I hope you covered it, absolutely, I don't choose.
I can hold in there, they're right there. The other two hundred dollars that had Rod Bannon's name on it was to coordinate with him with economic development. And he said that was a county expense, it was in coordination with economic development.
What coordination with Rod Bannon have with Roger? Yeah, for the Leaguer thing?
No, for the housing.
Yeah. That's that's.
Did we have a bill on that, Warren?
So, right. But that is through Leaguer. We, that, that's what we.
Economic development is. So. For seventy. With Rod Bannon for zoning.
I'm only the messenger here.
Hey, Dudley, real quick, Roger gave me an email, we just won votes ready to vote in the Lilly Grant for, for the Leaguer building in the market, I need to rework our application and join them together. They were excited about joining, it was Joe Bass and Joe Blake's Park Projects, which, which they're supposed to do over September eighteen. We can now be over and over one construction start. But I'm here.
I have big feeling about that.
Yeah, our last, our last meeting.
Um, so just, I'll talk to you later, okay, yeah, and we'll, we'll talk a lot about this stuff. Starting in seventeen, when we work on these budgets, so.
We'll have a level of information.
What else?
Okay, we had the question for the county highway, when they got their additional breaks for this year. Has to do with longevity, they thought they were getting. What they got plus their longevity, we were the understanding that longevity.
Sold it in.
Was included in that, so we need clarification. I went back and listened to the meeting and that was said then. You listened to the meeting? I did. Okay, and longevity was a part of the race, okay, that's how we get into.
But it would not affect the secretary because.
We agree with that. That's what they said, they, because Dudley said that's how we did the sheriff department, it's that the longevity went away, so you're basically getting them on. Schedule of they were being paid out for how long they've been there and then.
I'm glad you listened, I, well, that's what we.
Specifically said that.
You know, but I knew you made the motion in second, and I said, well, let's check, yeah, okay.
I thought, but I, I mean, I talked that way, I was sure, so I don't have to listen. One more thing and I'm done, I promise.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
You got several orders.
And counsel, but you gave nine one one overtime money, she has put that in the red, seven hundred twenty dollars and sixty nine cents, can I transfer money to make it zero? Or should I?
For money from your funds?
From some of your funds, no, okay.
I want an explanation, why she's.
I knew that spreadsheet, Kim, Kim and Lisa got together with that, but uh. Like today, what we, what was that for, was that overtime, no, that was in a part time.
Or can we take that from the reverting fund, transfer? I mean, I think it's reverting.
She probably wouldn't do that.
I'm just aware that how much overtime is in this county, I, this word is just, I'm seeing it behind my eyeballs when I sleep.
And I'm wondering if part of it is, they had the, well, they had the uh, comp time, and we planned down on the comp time, and so now they're just. Paying overtime since we asked for a detailed list every day of. Reverting fund, I show a hundred and nineteen thousand, but I don't know what you.
There was.
In the twelve point three, non reverting nine one.
Right, just to call this, we're in red and overtime on that. I hear this, and in part time, but she gave her seven thousand today, but.
I tell her she needs to kind of talk to.
Yeah, I figured out she had fifty three thousand dollars.
Sure, but.
And overtime, we have spent thirteen thousand three hundred ninety, you gave her ten thousand, she's asked for five thousand dollars. Uh, I'm assuming that was an adjustment from the operator and we're in the red three hundred ninety.
Wouldn't you say you had left it in the movie? Well, according to our financial report, you know, there are. Uh, twelve point three, a hundred nineteen dollars, but then necessarily you're on the third first. Come on up, Patty.
You're the next contestant.
On, is there any money to spend?
Well, the bright side is next year is a non election year, so I'm gonna, it looks, I'm gonna just earn it good.
Yeah. So you look at the three funds and you're at, and. Less money for next year than used for this year.
Hey, I'm, I'm a hard person, I, I'm just like, no, we can't spend that, stop it, no, you can't buy that, no, we don't need any funds.
Go down the bank, right? Okay, so we got page two. Like increase of seven thousand for next year.
Page two, counter.
Very first of the book. And postage went up a little bit, like, sorry.
Postage has gone up three times in the last, and it's like, it's, it's crazy. I'm gonna change service there. I was reading, they, it's gonna go up every six months, so it will be going up in. Want to say forever, Ron, yes. You might as well sell those on eBay for two or three.
Anybody have any questions? Has he got anything here?
Yeah, I, I can't, I mean, there's just, I went through and I sat down a lot, just with the like, stuff that I just heard Tom say talking about cutting frame, it's like, you know, we just. I'm the only one that I go to three conferences, or sometimes four conferences of the year. You know, and one of them is, you know, the required annual conference, and the other thing is nothing there that I wouldn't need, I mean, I don't need fifteen hundred dollars, so why do, why is that in there?
And we need to put as much of it as you can under the elected officials. Training.
Yeah.
Probably, because that's what. Probably, because that's what that recorder's fee is. Use that, so. With that first before you use your budget.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I know what we can't like office supplies, I know what we have in stock up there. I do probably next year, I'm. Put in a little bit of money so that, um, at the end of the year, next year, we'll be able to start stocking up. You know, unless they get a change, which I don't look forward to change anytime soon, but the election. Um, law says that because we're vote center counties, that we have to have one hundred percent. Of the voter registration count. That many ballots in every polling place, in every vote center, so we have a little, we have a twelve thousand registered voters. So to have over twelve thousand ballots. At five vote centers, I mean, I, we ran out of ballots in, in the primary. I mean, we had to make a mad dash to corner county and borrow a thousand ballots. And so we have been ordering ballots and stopping up on ballots, and damn, we have got so many ballots now, there's no way we're gonna run out, but then I'm thinking, okay, we're gonna come enough to put twelve thousand. Yeah, but she said, they said, because, listen, in your counties that have. You know, a hundred plus thousand registered voters, they're like, there's no way. And then she's saying, she being the, one of the co-directors of the election division said, yeah, that's what code says. But we're not gonna come out to see if you have, you know, because obviously we know, you know, about how many people are gonna show up at what. But, um, we are definitely making some changes for the fall election before. Gonna do some record cleanup next year, like. Court records, in the off election year, so we've got time to do that, and work on the basement, some of the records cleaned out in the basement. When does early voting start? Early voting starts on November eighth.
How about the, um. The machines that reads your driver's license? Do we, we have, is there just one or two at each polling place?
There, there's actually three, um, we typically don't to. Just have what we're gonna, and that's something to change, we're gonna maybe do a select one. So for the two vote centers that are the most busy, which is out in Covington, we're going. And we tried it in Attica in the primary, we had two controllers set up, two check-in points, so you could go in, go to either side. Back in, get your ballot, go to a machine, and that's what we're gonna do in Covington as well.
Okay, that's good, cause I know Covington.
Yes, and, and we also with these new machines, with, you know, with the old machines, they used to like sit like kind of at that angle. And so we would set them up so that nobody would walk behind you. And, um, because you couldn't, you were walking behind somebody, you could look and see their ballot on the machine. So we did a test, um. There were several of us that went to state convention, who were state convention delegates, and the area that they had set up to vote in. I mean, they were just side by side by side on a table, and it was like people's walking back and forth, and. I even tried, I mean, I turned my head and looked, when I went behind somebody and. You could not see their ballot, you would have to be standing like right on their hip and looking down to receive their ballot, so we're gonna change our polling, um, setups. To where the machines are flipped, so we don't have all that, all the electrical cords, the trip hazards. Uh, we had a little bit of an incident in Kingman in the primary. And, uh, older person, you know, he tripped on the cords, and so we're just gonna make that to where there's been trip hazards.
Okay, how many of those readers do you have though?
Four to, for the, for the driver's license? Three, let's see, there'd be fifteens, let's see, fifteen that goes out on election day. And then we have. One that goes to Attica for early voting, one that stays here, I think we have eighteen.
Okay, suppose you thought you needed more. Cause we've got that fun.
Yeah, we don't, um, I'll tell you what we might end up, what we probably may need to do next year, we may need to think about replacing our. You know, they, they only last for so long, and but if we do that, I definitely wanna keep, uh, some of the old ones on hand. So that we can put our, um. The ballot, the, um, sample ballots on, so you can have at the polling place. If they wanna see a sample ballot, that's all the counties are going to electronic sample ballots. And, um, I tried to get in on some of the counties that were changing out their poll pads. And, you know, getting some of their poll pads and, and I mean, they just went like that. So, I thought, well, we've had ours now, and how many years we've had it.
So, talking about early voting, like the city of Attica, will that start on the 12th?
No, it's, it's, this, on, in the city of Attica, it will just be the two Saturdays before the election night, from nine to one.
Yes, and it's every day through the week, eight thirty to four thirty, close twelve to one for lunch.
On city back, only the two Saturdays prior to.
The two Saturdays.
Two Saturdays prior to election.
And this year, we're gonna be, um, we're gonna be in emergency management in their east room.
Okay, anybody have any other questions for that? Or Taylor, I guess, I should say. We're gonna call you Taylor, your name.
Oh, yeah, I'll be too.
Okay, well, thank you very much. You told us earlier, that's it? Okay, and let's go for our budget.
Hey, that's all right, that's fine with me.
Uh, cause Lisa's taking over, and she's just, since she's new. Yeah, she's doing a great job too.
Um, it's just your, I say, computer maintenance, looks like your contract went up a little.
It did, and. Also, we added, uh, remote planes and remote reporting, so that kind of bumped it a little bit, but not. Not a whole lot. And I did increase the travel mileage, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, you take it over here.
No, you're fine. Because I felt like. Kim is gonna need some training and Katie the deputy that like, you're gonna need to put Lisa or. Somebody else to, to conferences, because we had been kind of short this year, I'm not going to AIC just because I didn't wanna ask for already. And, uh. I quit, and I did increase it by hundred because I know that we're probably gonna have to have a new. Computer or something down the road, but.
Did you, is this in there? So, the state. Passed legislation for the, the council can. Uh, establish a stipend to the auditor, twenty five hundred dollars a year. Because they're required at attendance at additional meetings. Meetings that held outside of the usual work hours, increased workload volume. And other relevant factors is determined by the county fiscal body. And that is not. So, that's something we'll discuss. Part do you wanna do the citation? Yeah, we'll just put it in budget, yeah.
I would kind of like to see some of that for this year. I know there's, there's money in there, but would be added of all these public information requests and. Attending the ABC meetings, like. It's just an overwhelming share.
But can we?
It started July first, it was effective July one, and also it's, I didn't print the clerk's. Portion of it, but the clerk, the clerk is also included in that, so, but she, I asked her about it, and she. Wasn't interested.
Well, my clerk gets. Registration officer money, clerk gets election board. Member money, so. Cause we, would we have an additional, or can we take that over council budget?
If we add this to, for next year, where would you put it?
And the stipend, can it, does it need to be aligned, or can it just be added to the salary?
I would keep this separate. Just so that when you're audited, they'll know that that was a stipend. But that, I mean, that's.
So you're gonna need to create a line then? Or we could rename that economic developer slash grant writer. So can we, yeah. So we could transfer money from.
From the July first, we said on twelve fifteen. To, I don't know, the county.
Right, do the number capital outlay, can we transfer?
Bring the chance, what I would do is. Transfer it out of the money line items up into the one hundreds. And, and I could use this number fourteen eight fifty after I change it.
Okay, so transfer the capital outlay up into like our fourteen four oh one special.
And then, uh.
At special meetings, whatever you call it. And just make the heading the same, can you do that?
Kind of wanted a stipend, right? So, we're gonna, she's gonna rename that fourteen eight fifty under the auditor to stipend.
And we said for that, I think. In my opinion, or whatever it's worth, is a stipend, if you change something else, it's kind of like you changed your salary. And elected officials can't.
You can't change it, yeah. So, is there a motion to move? Twelve fifty from cap, transfer from twelve fifty from capital outlay up to our fourteen four oh one, okay? And so, Kelly, all those in favor? Fourteen four oh one. To these, Kelly. Okay, and then you're gonna rename the fourteen eight fifty ever. Okay, if anything else? Always calling.
Really, their budget has to change a lot, I, uh, we asked for an additional in the salaries. And that, that is to get it more in line with some of the county highway employees, we've always tried, the boards always tried to. Keep them about the same, um. I did decrease some and made new line items just for accounting purposes.
Yeah, it's top of page two.
Oh, there we go, yeah, so I put that out of some of the, cause it's not really a repair, uh. But really overall, our budget would not change a lot, um. We've had some changes in roll-off equipment, since I've done this, so it could be that roll-off. I asked for seventy thousand, but we may not need that much. But I kind of like to have that, cause like during Christmas time and. Those giving, sometimes we have to have extra dumpster, because of.
You know, I noticed on here, there's a tire. I wish there was a way that you could eat like, pound tires and some money tires.
Well, we do, well, there is a limit on. A lot of that is handling. You know, to get them into the dumpster, but, uh. The county did have a problem that we're going to use some of that for, uh, somebody jumped ten fifty tires.
Down the road.
Yeah, down the road.
There was like three different piles, I rode my bike on Saturday, I had two piles, and then like Monday I rode, and then it was third one, I mean, we're talking piles.
Right, the dump trucks, they load them up, they took it to, uh, Walden's for recycle. And we will pay for that because we're charged four dollars a tire. The sheriff's department is investigating, and if they can find out we did it, they'll be. Charged, like, they'll ask for that back. On the other side, well, else we're throwing down. But we do try to have a recycle day, and we take so many tires, I think it's up to four tires before we start charging them for free. And then we also do electronic recycling, which you can, that'll go out. And it's been pretty good. Good thing we've done it for two years straight now, and this will be the third year, we don't have a date set yet, but.
How was that announced?
Actually, I put it out in the paper, I put it on my Facebook page and just. Posted around, I, I put it at post offices, I mean, I've taken them around personally and. Yes, county website too, so.
Okay, anybody else have anything? So we're not going to adjourn, we will just reset, so.
I did have questions.
Oh, yeah.
Is the legislature commissioners could submit? But putting in our items for open money? Is that where that came from, is that how that process, the issue is?
We budgeted. It's been that we both have to agree. It's under, what's it under, capital outlay for next year, I mean. December thirty first, the end of. We have to have it this.
And we have to have a contract. Obligated does not be appropriated, so.
So who starts that process, is like commissioners or council?
At this point, I would say it'd be a hell of a thing, I mean. If it's going to be for a capital outlay, if it's a building, commissioners need to initiate it, but.
Operator came to. uh operator came to the commissioners and asking for that money. And when they approved it, it came to the, yes. Or do you think the same thing I am? Well, I'm just saying money's on the table. I mean, are, is there protective of project that you're?
Not really, no, well, only a clarification for a little trail project down on the river.
Yes.
So the council did a special appropriation last year. You know, I don't know what the impact is. I mean, it could be six one way happen just, yeah, I could cover parking money, not be a special appropriation, or? Yeah, I was just.
Go ahead, Jim.
I just see so many needs out in the community, I'm like, who's going to are, initiate this process?
That's how it was there, our, our need again at Hillsboro is uh, we were told by we that that they would help in the planning part of fixing those steps in the downtown. When Endot comes through, and that's all we done to say. And Hillsboro has to come up with the money to do it. So that they would keep, they would cooperate with Endot to get it better. Well, Hillsboro people uh came up with uh an architect and an engineer that were acquainted with some people there, I mean, they're basically working with Hillsboro but not getting charged, uh, rock charges. So, uh, but people in Hillsboro feel like they need to pay some to do, to get this project in the long paper written up and everything. And what, and the figure was about six grand. Well, we went to, we talked about it weekend, there's a clause in the contract that said we give a contracted uh entity that just uh, however, they, they uh make recommendations, they don't, you don't get any money from them out of we go to pay for projects. So uh, I was just thinking that if we had, if we have our money, is there a chance uh that we can go to the commissioners and get a certain brand out of our, we're doing papers, projects, for the, right?
This is what I've been told, they only want that's found in Maple Corner, and they're not gonna budge on it. So I, I, we're, we're. Yeah, that, and so I'm
are you kidding me?
That's what I'm, I've been told.
Now, here's my take on it. Hillsboro didn't use all their money that we allotted them. So I feel like part of that, that they gave back, maybe we shouldn't use it for that.
It's, it's community people and maybe, maybe somewhat county government come together and get this project done to help them out as far as they're gonna be paying compliance, if it looks bad, blah, 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 but it's just for the planning, and you can't, we got, you gotta pay those guys something, that's my thing. That's, that's what you're talking about, stuff like that, right, whatever.
Anything.
Yeah.
Anything.
Or just happen, you know what, I, I.
Whether it's another covered bridge in Wallace, or if it's something in that.
The courthouse issues we have and highway garage and the.
Exactly.
We, now, what that we eat. That's where that money has to go, if it's not ready to be done, then we gotta use somewhere to feed for, or something we can appropriate it. So that way we can use that money, you know.
Uh, and we don't know whether this envoy, we're gonna get billed any more money.
Right, I just, it makes me all nervous, taking out a new or different project, so. So instead of being staring at some pretty face on the public blocks, something's done.
Yeah. Just bringing it up to keep it on.
I agree.
Yes, yeah, cuz you got, you sent me four, seven.
Three months is not a long time.
Let, let me talk to Aaron because he is a vote on the commissioners and see what he, his suggestions are, what he thinks he can get the other two, at least one of them to, to, yeah. And they're still, and they're still next year, whatever. Yeah, that's right, so I, I'd be, I'm, I'm with Denise, I think it ought to be set aside for either redoing the courthouse for, for the county highway or. So nine one one, I think we can use, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I've been told we can use special lift, if we build that out there, so.
The courthouse and the.
Courthouse.
Highway.
So you just wanted, you guys, you two wanted people to, yeah.
It's.
Yeah. I mean, that's my opinion, cuz it's not that you gotta get close to cover what we need to do for our house, but uh, plan our county highway around it.
We need, we need to.
Gotta move on those two things, start, that direction.
Yeah.
In another.
Yeah.
But we also have, have commissioners.
Right, I don't think we're gonna get that done this year, because I think they're agreed to, but can we pay for something else? And then use money that we have, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, that's another thing, if you can find out, is we, if we reimburse the county or some, yes, like an ambulance or something.
That's what I want, those big tickets.
And then we could have that money in our county general, we could use it.
That's my thought, yeah.
But, but the frustrating part about we get here is we paid them four million dollars a year. And we're, I, if, if they can't come up with six thousand dollars to help this project, that's all, that's, it may not even be that much, stay on my, we take four thousand, but uh, that, that was frustrating part of the meeting we had the other day, and Rod made it clear that it wasn't for physical things, it was just for counseling and getting pro- projects started, so.
Well.
And it's very vague, I read it, but that's, it is that way, golly, poses.
So then we'll talk more, yeah, when we the nineteen, I mean, uh, seven, what? Some thoughts have been given to me about, we, I don't know, what did, your thoughts, are you? Did your commissioner, you're the commissioner, I'm not trying to put you in the spot, but yeah, would you want the funding for the economic development, or are you looking at an, an all different?
I don't think there's anything problems with money being allocated to the contracts and then getting able to die. Things to address.
Okay, and uh, I can tell you, I've talked to a couple other candidates, and they are not, they say, cut it out, we wanna go a different direction on the economic development.
I agree with the same thing, and he said, what we pay, we can have, so.
Working, and I want to clarify, so I'm, I'm at Ross Focus. I've watched that, I mean, if, if we signed a contract with the town, that's. And that's for ready to came through and little, or it's just, I mean, or having, that's what we managed to drive.
Anything else? Okay, we're, we're not adjourned, or just uh, are you gonna be now on?